Okay, I would like...
(laughing)
Well, doesn't anybody...
Good evening, Ms. Brenner.
I just found out mine's the only one that does that.
I would like to call to order the December 4th, 2018 meeting of the Waukesha County Council. Would you please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown. Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Byrd?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Carol Frazer?
Here.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Here.
Thanks, Mr. Brown, but shortly, would you please join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the standard announcement at the beginning of these meetings, if you have your cellphones, please turn those off and set them on silent. For people coming up and speaking to us, if you have some paperwork that you want to give us, make sure you hand a copy to the clerk. The first item on our agenda is from the Committee of the Whole. We had an executive session this afternoon approving a letter to send regarding the Birch Bay Drive and pedestrian facility to the Lemhi Indian Business Council, and that letter will be public and sent. And the item that was discussed in executive session will have the words "for the benefit of fish and shellfish" added to the letter. Other than that, it's the exact same thing. This is where the Waukesha County Council is respectfully requesting the attention of the Lemhi Indian Business Council in support of intergovernmental agreements for the Birch Bay Drive pedestrian facility. And that hopefully will be getting to them tomorrow. Okay, so our...we are...agenda changed. We are not doing the special presentation from the Washington State Department of Transportation that was done this afternoon, which was really fascinating. It was fun. Congrats to those folks for their award. We didn't get to do that on camera, so...
Todd?
Yeah?
Councilmember Donovan. Could you move approval of that letter?
Oh, I could.
Thank you.
It's not in the script. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this from Mr. Buchanan moves?
I move.
I second.
Ms. Brenner seconds. Okay, all those in favor, is that just a voice vote? All those in favor of approving the letter to send to Lemhi Indian Business Council, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. That passes six-zero with all council members in favor and Councilmember Brown on his way. Okay, the next agenda item we have is the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move the amended version. There were some corrections in the minutes.
Okay, the orange...
Yep.
We call that salmon-colored, orange-colored?
Well, that's more orange orange. Salmon is like a little bit...whatever.
Is there a second for approving?
I second that.
Okay. That's a voice vote? Everyone want to take a look at that for a minute?
Yeah, it was just...I was at the meetings, they said it didn't show that, so they put that in there, and there was a comment I made, then they put that in there, and there was something else. It was mostly...it was mostly because I was there.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
amended, aye.
Aye.
The amended minutes, aye. All opposed? That passes six-zero. Did Mr. Brown vote? Yes, he did.
Yes, it is.
Seven-zero? I couldn't hear over Ms. Brenner. All right, I'm going to hand you the script. I didn't know I was...
Thank you, sir. My apologies. Okay, so what do we have for the open session?
Yeah, we have the open session.
Yeah, it's just the open session. Okay, during the open public session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for a public hearing. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. And if you're going to hand out anything to the council members, please ensure you have a copy for the county clerk as well. I'd like to ask everybody who wants to speak to please start lining up in front of the podiums, and as one person speaks, the next person should move up to the podium and be ready to speak when they're free. Please continue.
The large district, third district of the county, just got off the shuttle bus, came in from Cleveland, the home headquarters for British Petroleum, and bought Standard Ohio...Standard Oil of Ohio back in the day. And the story I have for you seems timely as you discuss that today on your agenda. Back in the early 2000s, British Petroleum proposed doing a cogeneration plant. That's where they take...they're using the natural gas to make heat, to supply the needs of the refinery. In cogeneration, they take that same energy, use it to run a big jet engine, several jet engines in their proposal, and they generate electricity. The other byproduct coming off the back of that jet engine is a massive amount of heat. So you're getting dual purpose out of the same BTU of energy used. This was in the early 2000s when they did this, during the energy situation that Enron created. And the manager there at British Petroleum called me and asked me, as a member of the community and knowledgeable in this thing, if I would back their proposal. And I, after talking with them, said, yes, I would, because no new footprint is needed. They're shutting down old technology boilers and generating electricity and using the heat. They exist on the grid. It's supporting an industry that exists in the community. It supports the jobs that exist there. It's a win all the way around, in my opinion. And so I went on the roadshow with...I believe he's still the manager up there. I forget his name at the moment. And we did a few things, one up in the Blaine Library and around the county, and I was saying yes to this proposal. And then Enron was caught in their fraud and their manipulation of the energy market. And all of a sudden, the environmental impact was statement was going on, and this good thing was happening at British Petroleum. Poof! It just went away.
Thirty seconds, please.
Why did it go away? Called them and asked them. Well, the bean counters back in Cleveland don't think that it's a good idea, because they're not going to make the money that they thought they were going to make off of it. So when you follow these folks, it's all about the money. And the moment when it doesn't quite add up, and they can't make that money in those couple months and make the payoff, poof, goes away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you do. Have a good holiday.
Thanks, Mike.
Gilfillan, and please come forward to be ready at the mic.
I'm Joy Gilfillan, past president of the Restorative Community Coalition, and I'm on a new venture, and that is to talk about fiscal accountability of our taxpayers' dollars with regards to incarceration and tax consumption. I stand opposed to the introduction of this...or not to the introduction of, I understand that, the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force becoming an authorized supporter of the Law and Justice Council, where you're...basically, the Law and Justice Council, from my standpoint, is subsuming the authority of the Incarceration Task Force. By creating 18 of the 26 members being permanent, established members of the task force, all of which are basically representatives of law enforcement and paid positions of the county, you have just created a complete imbalance of power in the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force. That's 18 to 25, all law enforcement or law enforcement-related authorized permanent positions. That only gives you, the council, eight positions that you can choose to appoint to that task force. Eight to 18 is an imbalanced power grid to law enforcement. Eight people, 50% of those people are for paid consultants or paid agencies who get paid by taxpayers as nonprofit organizations who are working in service. So those people also are paid by taxpayer dollars. There are only four more members left on this task force, two of which are supposed to be citizen representatives without any constriction on who you're electing, and two of those people are supposed to be consumers of the system. There is not one representative on the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force that is actively looking for prevention and reduction of services. All the rest of them are in one way or another implicitly biased and prejudiced to perpetuate the system. I've had a strong opposition to that all along, but in watching the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force, the members have worked really, really hard to do good work for the community. The last couple of years, they've done extraordinary work. They were created...the whole task force was created by the prior councils in order to reduce taxes and prevent incarceration. The task force was created because the taxpayers said no once...
Thirty seconds, please.
...to increasing sales taxes. We said no a second time, because what we want is reduction and we want prevention. If you build a conflict of interest inside and a double bind inside that task force, you're going to neutralize everything that this council has worked to achieve over the last few years, and you're going to further expand the growth of the jail industrial complex. I stand opposed to it, and I would like to have a public hearing. I would ask that you have a public hearing with the public to bring you solutions and talk about it differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for your time. I'm Michael Gallegos. I live in Everson. I'm in the local laborers union, 292. Been in that union since 2009. I work 5B.M. As a real estate broker in California. I really enjoy the job that I'm doing now. We're over 1,400 people strong in our local laborers union. That's ours alone. We voted for some of you people. So time to listen to us that voted for you. Seems earlier today you had a special committee of the whole, and it seemed as if the council was confused as to why people thought you were against or anti-oil. Change that. You need to express your support for the oil industry. There's not one of us that didn't come here in a car. We need that refinery set here in the Pacific Northwest, bringing us that fuel. Perhaps it's your lack of testimony and comments that help people believe that. I don't believe that you are all against the oil industry myself personally, but a lot of the people that have voted for you are. And if you don't say that you're not for the oil industry, then people are going to assume something that they should not. Your job to keep us safe. It's your job to move our county forward. Gifted you the wonderful opportunity to represent us and make choices for us. Thank you. I know it's not an easy job. I've done a lot of volunteer work myself. I understand what you're doing. I don't know one laborer that I know personally or have worked with that is anti-environment, okay? Not one. And a lot of these issues seem to be anti-environment. 1631 was actually pushed and created by a member of the Northwest Washington Central Labor Council. It did not win, did it? Because it did not take care of business the way we thought it should be. And it wasn't just taxes is what we were concerned with, the allocation of the funds to correct things that need to be done. It did not take care of apprenticeship programs in the proper way in the verbiage.
Thirty seconds, please.
We're probably all on the same general theme of thought. We just don't want it to move about too quick, and again, not too slow. Change is coming. You have the opportunity, like I said in the past. I'm not working in Auburn. I could be here today because I'm working at BP. I'm not working in Everett. So I can be here today because the place that I work is pretty close for me. Thank you for your time. Bless you all.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Roach. I'm also a member of the local 292. My union and all the building trades feel it critical that we make a strong ongoing statement that we oppose your proposed changes for Cherry Point. We are at a critical transitionary period in this county as it relates to fossil fuels and industrial areas generally. Local governments must be balanced to the need...balance the need to transition the green economy with the need to maintain the current economy. Please work closely and cooperatively with Cherry Point so that we can all enjoy a prosperous and safe future together. Thank you.
Good to see you this evening. My name is a proud member of local laborers...
Could you pull that down?
Sorry. Okay, my name is Judy Wilson, and I'm a proud member of Laborers Local 292. And yes, I am here to talk about Resolution 2018 to 015 in Cherry Point. I work at BP, and I live in...By now, you are clear on how opposed the laborers and all building trades are to your proposed changes affecting Cherry Point. Encourage you to work closely with Cherry Point companies to ensure that Waukesha County is a desirable place for transition into this exciting industry of the future. Impact if they want to do business here in the future. Modern societies, we will always need industry. Let's work together to keep family wage industrial jobs here in Waukesha County. Happy holidays, and we're looking forward to working with you in the near future.
Hi, my name's Hannah. I'm another member of Laborers Local 292. And I'm here today because I am very concerned about your proposed changes to Waukesha County Comp Plan and the Waukesha County Code as they relate to Cherry Point. In life, we are all judged by how we handle difficult transitions. That is especially true for our elected leaders. We are in the middle of such a transition now as it relates to fossil fuels and the industry. You must be very careful as we transition to greener fuels and we preserve our community's relationship with industry. We will always need industry in our modern society. Please keep this in mind as you make your changes that affect industry at Cherry Point. I urge you to support Waukesha County industries and focus on policies that balance economic opportunity and prosperity with environmental stewardship, safety, and improvement in Waukesha. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to continuing this conversation in 2019.
Excellent.
Just before you do, if there's anybody else who wants to speak, please start lining up at this other podium.
Good evening. My name's Trevor Smith, S.M.I.T.H. I live at 1209 Roland Street, Bellingham, Washington. I'm a business agent for Laborers Local 292. One of my coworkers and I, we came to the Committee of the Whole, and I was very encouraged by the conversation that you guys had with BP and Phillips 66 in Alcoa. You guys are right, there's a lot of confusion. The general perceived public opinion is, is that the council is moving on a moratorium with the idea of stopping fossil fuels out of Cherry Point. I was very encouraged by what you guys were talking about and the fact that you...I mean, several of you came out and specifically stated that you support American jobs, American oil, and American products being refined here for American and foreign consumption. I think that's great. That's exactly what it is we're looking for. We want to keep the jobs here. We support the idea that what you're looking at is from the safety point of view. There's not a one of us that doesn't live in these communities that doesn't want you guys to be worried about that. You know, we want you to look into it. We want you to be involved in it. We want to help, but we need these jobs, right? And these guys were talking about the fact that they're doing the diesel recycle units, recycling a product that can now be used more greener, cleaning up their processes, showing that they're cleaning up their processes. So we fully support that, and we fully support you guys spending more time learning about the processes so you can make a better decision. But we would also like to see that this become a bigger, broader conversation so there isn't this confusion. If you're not out to pass a moratorium to shut down the refineries and to shut down Cherry Point, that needs to be more broadly put out there, because there is a lot of confusion. So I just wanted to say thank you, actually, because you guys did part of that today, and we do really appreciate that. We look forward to having more of these conversations when it comes to opening up the comp plan, and we'll keep being involved in this. So I just wanted to say thank you and happy holidays.
Kathy Sable, I live in District 3. I attended this morning's committee meeting talking about the watershed update plan, and I wanted to clarify something, since I've been going for a year and a half. I'm not 100% on everything, but this is my understanding, and I believe others, that the law applies only to new wells, this plan we're trying to work at. And as Sat Paul has said, 2,150 new wells are projected in the next 20 years. These...this is to consumptive well use, not to the actual withdrawal. And the number was 647 acre feet is what RH2 determined had to be offset. The $500 that's already in the law is an application fee, and it's one time only for new wells. And we heard Gary Straka say only eight new wells this year, which surprised me because there had been pent-up demand. The withdrawal limit is 3,000, and that's for the new wells. If you're an existing well owner, you get the 5,000. Just as you said, Mr. Red Brown, that is for first, you know, first in place, first in time. You've got those water rights first over the new wells if you have an old well. Currently, the county has code to protect the rural character, so there are differences between the city and the rural, and I think that needs to be pointed out, since there seems to be a lot of comparisons between the two. And as a well owner, I know that water is not free. I'm paying for it by maintaining, maybe having to dig a new well if something happens, and then the septic system that goes with it. We've already spent $140,000 for a contractor. That's just one contractor that the Department of Ecology has administered. I'm not sure how much the other ones, the county with their RFQ, has cost. I have not heard any cost-to-benefit ratio analysis of metering. And that usually in the work I used to do, we looked at that. And the main reason I've heard in the planning use of for not being in favor of meeting is what are you getting for it? For all this money and this uncertainty of how to apply it and how to maintain the data? Who owns that data? How will it be used? Now that this has been brought up...
Thirty seconds, please.
...this morning, I have public comments on the plan, and Gary Straka should be saying yes or no from you, whether legal, whether the public, without going through a caucus, can give public comment on that plan. I believe I can. If I run out of time, I will submit them to the county, and you can tell me yes or no. I can do it as a public member. The uncertainty is going to remain regardless of whether you have metering or not, because it's an estimate. If you just meter the withdrawal, you are estimating 10% is only used and the other 90 is returned. You don't have a meter on outdoor use, and that seems to be a big concern, unless you have a way to say coming out of that septic system, that's what really was used. If you have a way to say this water was used for outdoor, you have uncertainty. You're not getting more certainty with metering. I just felt you need to dig a little deeper, just because it is a very complex issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, could you please leave your phone number with the clerk? I want to talk to you.
Again, if there's anybody else who wants to speak, please line up. Otherwise, we'll be closing the session after these four people.
Roger Olskarlenius, consultant. I have a handout here. I forgot to bring my stapler with me, and I was in a... Mike Personias, who I talked about. I looked at the comprehensive plan on the subject of this code amendment that we're supporting, and if you look at page two of the handout, which is page 2-69, paragraph seven at the top is the only one I could find in the entire rural development... Take my...don't count my time on that, please. Okay. So...
Seconds.
The paragraph seven is the only statement I could find on the subject we've been talking about, the 24.11.050 code. And I don't...you know, you've been...you know by now, I've been in the field for a long time, planning and land use. I have never heard of a government, county or city, having to amend its comp plan to make a very minor, limited-scope amendment to the code that it adopted in 2002. So I don't understand this issue of, well, do we have the authority to do this or not? I think that's a no-brainer. I don't get that opposition. And let me get into some other items now. I did turn in a letter today. I'm sorry it was so late, but we were hoping to have some progress with the Water Association in the middle of the week. It didn't happen. We were supposed to have a meeting, and it didn't happen. So I appreciate all the efforts late this afternoon to come up with a way forward on this, but if you put this into the comp plan process, that's going to take several months. There's just nowhere...I mean, you'd be moving heaven and earth to not do that. So a very...yeah, this is...people have said, well, this will only help a few people. Well, that's still important, and it's not just one person. We have turned in evidence, an email from a party named Meeks that went through this a couple of years ago and made one of these deals with the Deer Creek Water Association, the same kind of arrangement that the Carusas have offered to make, and that was rejected. Oh, you're a developer. You've got three lots. Well, that's not a developer. There's no...then they have no definition of it. So on the well issue that Mr. Donovan brought up a few days ago, I looked at that information in the consultant report very carefully, and in the letter I turned in today, there's detail in there about it. And I think that this particular amendment would have very little impact on the number of wells that Kathy was just talking about in the next 20 years. So I hope you'll find time to read that. So...
Thirty seconds, please.
Again, you know, it puzzles me why this issue of the comp plan brought up by Mark Personias wasn't brought up several months ago. You know, we had a detailed discussion of this on the afternoon of June 19th, when the motion was made to send this to the WUC, which is not a regulatory body. They're strictly an advisory body, an industry advisory body. There's nobody on there except people that are involved in water associations or the county staff. So please make your best effort to give us a reasonable solution on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Anton Carusa. A month ago, Sat Paul invited Deer Creek Water Association to come up with a settlement with us. Nothing happened for a month. There was a lot of obfuscation and things like that, but finally, we got one today at 2:00 in the afternoon before your 2:45 meeting, and it's totally something that's not going to go anywhere. But anyway, I just want to give you that for full disclosure. Now, why are we here? We're trying to prevent other people from going through what we're going through, people who are forcibly put in water association areas with no pre-knowledge. We have no rights to appeals. They have total power over us, and we can't do anything about it. And we don't want other people to go through that. Now, one of the things that's important here is it's not just us. And that's been brought up before. There's a pattern. We talked about the $80,000 pot farm indulgence the last time. Dr. Lawrence, who's standing here, you should give him a hand. He's had hip surgery on November 7th, but he's here tonight. He paid $9,000 bucks in order to be...get a building permit, but not receive any product. We offered three times that amount, and so there is a pattern going on here of business practices that just shouldn't be allowed. The law should not allow any business to force somebody to buy something they don't need in order to get something that they do. It's just not right. And like the last time I brought it, but how is it even legal? So, you know, that's monopoly powers, and when you give people these kind of powers, they tend to abuse it. And we believe that this is our case with our local water association and others. So you've been at this for six months now, and I've been here to talk to you. You've heard from all kinds of people. You haven't heard from anybody who is against this water amendment. Nobody has opposed it. It's good for purveyors. It's good...it's okay for property... It's good, it's okay for property owners. Remember, paying for 500 feet of water line is extremely expensive. It's no gimme for property owners. And it's, it would be fair to both sides. Now, it was also interesting to find out that you've been threatened with a lawsuit. So what's the basis for the suit? To allow these business practices to continue?
30 seconds, please.
I think you guys would win. So, you know, please consider this, think about our, you know, tax-paying, law-abiding citizens of the county and protect us. That's the main purpose of government, is protection of the citizens. And so we're asking for your help, not just for us, but for a lot of other people now and in the future. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. My name is Dana Briggs. I'm living at large in the county, as I have been for almost a year now. So I've heard a lot of people talk about one of the roles of government is to protect the citizens, and that includes you and all of us. They talk about probably your biggest challenge for the upcoming year. It's become very evident that climate change is the one overriding factor that is going to end up either being a structure of humanity or we're going to do something about it. If you think this year was rocky, next year is going to be very interesting. So buckle up because the ride's going to be somewhat bumpy. Let me talk about the intersection of why climate change is going to be critical and everything that you have to do with not only the oil refineries, but anything else having to do with the environment is county or within the jurisdiction that you have control over. Number one, fossil fuels are going to have to be eliminated, and the sooner, sooner the better. I understand the concerns of the individuals that are sitting behind me and anybody else about good-paying jobs, but if you're having good-paying jobs that results in the destruction of the environment, then the jobs are not worth it in my estimation. Number two, climate change is destroying our food systems. It's been proven already that the carbon dioxide going into the atmosphere is making our food less nutritious. The third thing is, is that as we have less and less snowpack, we're going to have less and less water, and everybody that's concerned about their wells, there may not be any water in those wells in the coming years at the rate things are going right now. Lastly, the first people to get hit worse than anybody else when it comes to environmental changes is the homeless and the vulnerable, whether that's sea level rise, whether that's wildfires and the destructions of the places where they may be camping out, whether it's atmospheric pollution. It's all tied to what's going on with climate change right now. It may not seem like it in the last few days, having to do with 27-degree weather at night because a lot of people hear global warming and think everything's heating up. Overall, on the planet, yes, that's true, but there's also things called microenvironments, and the microenvironments are driving temperatures even lower in a lot of places.
30 seconds, please.
The council's done some outstanding work trying to address the homeless issue, but the problem is, is that we've got a bunch of people that are still out in the county right now that are going to have to survive the next three or four days and the months ahead in sub-freezing weather. So everybody needs to get on board to the fact that this is all tied together. Any decisions that you make, I'm sorry for the fossil fuel industry, but it's got to go. It has to go.
Time.
And they can come and help build the new alternative energy systems of the future. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Sandy Lawrence. We live, my wife and I, off of East Axton between the Guide and Hannigan. And since I've been here before on a number of occasions, I want to immediately reassure you, I'm not going to talk about the coal port or climate change as much as those are dear to my heart. Instead, I'm in the Deer Creek Water Association District. We live in the 42nd district as well, and we were caught in the same morass that the Carusas have been. I've known Anton and Mary Ann for years. Their kids went to the same high school as my kids, and so I was intensely sympathetic when I heard about their plight, which you have heard about on several occasions. Just over two years ago, we started the permitting process of the House that we're going to be finishing this month, finally. And we were caught up, first of all, in the fallout from the Hearst decision, but because we had started the permitting process early enough, we were allowed to proceed. When we went for the certificate of water availability through the Public Health Department, I think it was Lorette Rasmussen, who came out, put the GS, GPS monitor on top of the wellhead, and said, okay, everything checks out in terms of your water quality, but you know that you're in a water association. And I said, what? And she said, you need to get a denial letter from the water association to be able to proceed. So life got pretty complicated. We had a second water war starting then. Douglas Widinger was the, is the business manager and representative of Deer Creek that we began negotiation with, and it became fairly acrimonious quickly, and we ended up not doing phone calls, but instead somewhat heated emails back and forth. What they were asking is that we provide an easement along the front. We had all four properties on Chicklar Lane at one point. They wanted an easement along the front of the one that was just to the south of where we're building, for which they were not planning any recompense. They wanted also that us to sign a contract stipulating that once the Arman was placed, that we would then pay for the extension to our house. And the worst part of this was they wanted to then have us disconnect from our well, which we had drilled about eight years ago, has wonderful quality water, and unlike Deer Creek, does not have CA or concrete asbestos pipe, where they have to monitor the amount of asbestos, and also does not require a water softener. So we would have had to disconnect our well and hook up to their system with lesser water quality. So we negotiated back and forth. At one point, I finally just said I'd offer them $10,000 basically just to go away, and Mr. Widinger responded several days later, said, listen, I have a solution perhaps, and that is you can buy a water share...
30 seconds, please.
A water share for about $9,400, $9,600. We had to give up the easement, again, with no compensation. We had the water share, which is not marketable because if we give it up, then we are susceptible to being forced to attach to their system. The thing that really bothered my wife the most is we had to start paying on a bimonthly basis for water that we will literally never obtain, and this will be into the indefinite future. This could go on for decades.
Time.
And so I would like to support the Carusas. I understand it's basically a state issue, and you may not have many prerogatives, but I just wanted to stand here in their support. Thank you.
Hi. Excuse me. My name is Michelle Palmer, and I'm a property owner at 5033 Noon Road. I'm here also to speak about the code amendment for the 24.11 drinking water code amendment. I'm, I am a voting member of the Deer Creek Water Association, and I'm, I'm here to say that I, I've been disappointed in the way that the Deer Creek Water Association has represented me, and I, I am in full support of the code amendment so that it can set precedent for the rights of property owners and limit water associations that manage the rights to our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Abigail Sands, and I am property owner on Noon Road between Kelly and Smith, and I am also a voting member of the Deer Creek Water Association, and I would like to say that I do support this amendment of the Waccahoun County Code 2411.
I think we have two more people wish to speak. If anybody wishes to speak, please line up to the other podium. Otherwise, we'll close the public session.
Good evening. Long time no see. Irene Morgan, Poler Roder. I'm here to speak against the ordinance that would combine the incarceration prevention induction task force with the Law and Justice Council. I understand that Waccahoun County is in, not in compliance with state law by not having a Law and Justice Council, but I think to combine the two would, would be remiss by the council. The task force was created to prevent the passing of taxes, and we defeated two jail sales taxes. And if this passes and you do combine them, it tells us as citizens that you really aren't interested in what we think if you override us in that regard. The, if the task force becomes a Law and Justice Council, it will be mostly government employees that are on that council. There will be no citizens represented. They'll be, all be, and even if there are, any vote would be probably overridden. And since all the people will be government employees, the work of the task force will pretty much be moot. And there will be no way for, because the task force now has done some incredible work, and Bellingham City has done some extremely good work in cutting their population, their jail population, and they've saved a couple of million dollars, as I understand, just by using alternatives. And if, I believe that if these two groups are combined, we would lose all of that alternative to helping our citizens become functional. Thank you. Happy holidays.
If there's anybody else after this gentleman, we will close the session.
Good evening. I think you, my name is Jay Mark Carrion, 2867 Jensen Road. I think you got my correspondence today regarding the Carusa issue, and I'm here to talk in support of that, but also for water associations in general. We had the same situation. We had a group of board members that were acting in a certain way that were not being neighborly, being fairly abusive, causing people a lot of heartache, a lot of legal costs. And what we did is, and I hope that you hear this if you're in Deer Creek, we voted them out, and we went to the letter of the law of our bylaws and our articles of incorporation, and I have recently reviewed Deer Creek's bylaws and our articles of incorporation, and I find that if they followed their own legal governing documents, they would, we all would not be here to talk about this, to have reasonable, a need of reason to, to want the water, to have the water, and it has to be a mutually amenable arrangement. Now, in the county, we have some latitude for wells. That's, I'm also working in the Wyer program. We have latitude for a few wells. And I'll point out, I think you are absolutely right, when, what does one more well really mean? Well, no well. We have a situation in which this mentality of, is not representative of the membership. And I have met with many people from Deer Creek. I've met with other water associations. This is not typical. This is a very few amount of people that are bending the fabric of our rural way of life. Okay, I think probably I've said enough on that. I'm going to switch over now to Cherry Point, which I didn't think I was going to talk about. I'll leave you with this thought. In this, in the world of science and technology, it requires a lot of money to start new energy generation technologies. In the energy field, it is these same companies that can put R and D behind the new technologies that will replace fossil fuel. And I don't know of any other industry that is in a better position to do that. If I were to take Cherry Point tomorrow and redesign it, I would encourage every petroleum industry...
30 seconds, please.
...in the United States to come here to Cherry Point and, in an industrial or a light industry, research and development, and shape the future of new energy that's not fossil fuel, but you have to work with the existing. And for the folks here that are, are laborers from the unions, that creates jobs as well. You've got to take what you, you've got to take the sow's ear and make a silk purse out of it. Petroleum is on its way out. How do you get in front of that? And how do you stimulate science and technology to a lovely place to live and make a go of it? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll close a public session after Ms. Perry.
Carol Perry, Waccahoun County. I don't know how to breach so many subjects. Your first session this morning in committee about the Wyer One project. I've been following that since 2013. Went to all the committees, and it's a really confusing subject. I think Councilman Sat Paul Sado kind of capitalized, or I don't know what the term would be, when he said in a surface water meeting this last year, who's in control? And you know, the planning unit has been crying since it was reconstituted in 2013. Who is the lead agency? And as I watched you struggle with this this morning, there, there were people in the audience this morning, experts on water, from, from all the way from land use to people who know the subject up and down, and they've been, they've been, they've been sacrificing their time, no money involved. They're just there, month after month, and they've wrestled with environment, with fisheries, with forestry, with, it's incredible. And there's this lack of communication, and here, somebody brings you something, and you're supposed to make a decision on it when you haven't heard all this and you haven't had the benefit of all of it? It's a waste. I've, I've seen it with the Planning Commission, working till 11, 12 o'clock at night, wrestling with these things, and then it comes to you and you start all over, and you're expected to be experts on all this stuff. It's, it's a waste, and the jail, 20 years of it. And I look, I, I look at these people from Cherry Point. You know Max and I were sitting in this right over here in, I think it was 2014, when these Cherry Point amendments came. Councilman Sado, you captured it today. How long it's taken for this little, little thing? Max and I sat here.
30 seconds, please.
It was, it was the end of the comp plan. We were just cleaning up things, the council was, and these amendments came out of the blue. Nobody was here. And, and, and then it was the 4th of July, and then people came, and I remember Councilman Wymer saying, we want to hear from the industries. And do you know what we saw this day? The industries were here after.
Time.
15, 2016, 2017, 2018. You captured it, Councilman Sado. It's, it's too long. It's broken. You're paralyzed. I'm sorry, I had to say that. I, I didn't know what I was going to say, but listen, that planning unit, come tomorrow to the watershed management board. Come tomorrow night to the planning unit meeting, and you'll see the difference.
With that, we'll close the public session. I just want to bring one comment, respond to one comment that came up, which was a question about whether you could make comments on the water plan that's submitted to us. You're certainly welcome to send comments to the council at any time on that subject or any other subject. Mr. Sado, you, sorry, Mr. Burgess, you have a question?
Is there no other point in which we'll have an open public comment period for ESP 6091?
I'm not sure. Certainly not now, I mean, certainly not tonight. We were, we don't have anything to comment on, comment on tonight.
I understand that, but I mean, at some point, we, we are meant to see it at least one more time, right? Or in January, I think, 8th or, and 15th?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything coming forward.
And, and in the absence of knowing that, that's why I gave the invitation to, for people to comment, so. I would suspect that we'd have to have some public, at least, at the very least, an open public session on the night that we'd be voting on it, even if we didn't have, the 8th. Uh, January 8th, but we're not meeting on January 8th. We have, we have the county council approving this on January 8th, and we don't meet until January 15th.
Correct. Can I look at that?
Yep.
This from Gary? I can surely check into that for you. That's the first I've seen this.
Please do. It may be a struggle to get a quorum.
Thanks.
All right. Mr. Sado? Mr. Sado?
I'd just like to make a quick comment that, gentlemen, who is the business agent for 292? My number is in the county book. I would like to, if, if you like to, we can meet for coffee and you can bring a couple of friends with you. And even before the holidays or after the holidays, it's all up to you.
Mrs. Sado, I, I understand you're unavoidably detained earlier today, and Mr. Bird, I understand you're unavoidably, Mr. Bird took over chair.
Yes, I was absent from the finance administration committee today, and Mr. Bird handled that, and I'll let him go through the process tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Bird.
So, first up, we had the ordinance amending the 2018 Watcom County budget 15th request in the amount of $314,598, AB 2018-347. That passed 201 in committee.
Consent agendas first.
First, first, start from the consent agenda, and you can do it all.
All right, we're, we're switching pages.
Yeah, it's okay.
Go to the back, it starts in the front, and you start over. Okay, so, number one on the other item, request authorization for the, oh, no, okay, what? No, no, he said, um.
No, 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 that's okay.
No, no, the consent agenda items, you can move forward as the entire list of them.
All right, all 18 items, you can move them, you don't have to read them.
Except, there's one that did not get out of committee. There's one in consent.
One in consent and two on other items.
Yep. The other ones were not in consent.
Right.
So...
The 1-1 votes, I don't have to be...
I mean, those didn't get out of committee, so we'd move everything that is out of committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that. You can say items so and so and...
Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18 passed in committee 201 today. So moved.
It's been moved for approval?
Yes.
Yes. All items 1 through 16 plus 18 have been moved for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Mr. Donovan.
I recommend item 17.
Second.
Mr. Donovan recommends 17. Mr. Buchanan seconds, discussion.
Did he say recommend or move?
You assume you mean move for approval.
Move for approval.
Moves, move for approval.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan, ah, Mr. Bird, sorry.
Okay, we're easily, you know, confused.
I sit there sometimes.
So, for, and, sorry, for procedural purposes, I'm going to, would you read that one into the record, please, Mr. Donovan?
Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watcom County and the communities and schools to expand the program to the Blaine School District in the amended amount of $34,000 for a total contract amount of $282,750, AB 2018-375.
It's been moved for approval, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Bird?
Mr. Donovan, since you're moving this for approval, can you give me two statistics about this program and what it's done successfully, before we expand it by adding another $34,000 to the 282 we've already approved?
I can cite, there's 20 or 30 kids that will be served by this that are in need.
But can you give actual statistics to the success of what has happened with those children, other than that all?
We'll have to find out.
So you want to spend $34,000 more money when we actually don't know how well the program's worked this way?
Well, it did say something in there about how it was doing. Yes, just wait a...
And we did have comments from staff as to the effectiveness of the program, so.
Yes, the comments from staff were that they would come back to us because they didn't have specific statistics that they could give us at that time, hence the reason that I voted against this and had it held in committee. So I'm just wondering why we're voting to approve more budget for something when they can't articulate the success of the program to this point.
Ms. Brennan?
Well, that was kind of weird, what happened in committee, but this has come up before these particular kinds of programs. I support the concept of these programs, but they're not, you know, when it says evidence-based, there should be somebody giving you those numbers. I trust this a lot, and I would like to see the Blaine School District, you know, also included. But sometimes with me, I go on what I believe and what I trust, and we didn't get any numbers today, but maybe, looks like the director of the health department has something for us.
Delahunt?
Yes, Regina Delahunt, Public Health Director. So after the committee meeting today, staff did get together some of the statistics for the program, and I just have it on my phone here, so I'll read a little bit for you. Just the Watcom County impact of the program. So 83% of the students in this program improved their academics, 81% improved attendance, 76% improved behavior, and 100% of the students stayed in school compared to, to a, to a baseline. So nationally, the program has been shown that students who are in this program, 91% of the students graduate, 83% of the students meet academic improvement goals, and 93% of the students were promoted to the next grade. So there's really a tremendous amount of success associated with the program.
Is there, so I mean, improvement could be, you go from a D to, or a D minus to a D, right? 100% stay in school, I mean, was it 99% were in school beforehand for the baseline? Can you tell us what the baseline was? We know what we're actually comparing the data to?
I don't know that I have that in here, but, but I'm sure that it wasn't 99% of the kids that stayed in school.
Right.
So we can, we can get that information as well. But there are significant improvements in, in the, in the children that are enrolled in this program.
Ms. Donovan?
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. This is responding to Councilmember Bird. Curious request for numbers on one item on the 18-item consent agenda, where you seem to be looking for performance standards for $34,000 to improve the lives of kids in schools. Should we walk through the 18 items or 17 items that you did not ask for information about, the million or $2 that you just approved with no, no, let's, let's start with number one. Can you give me data about the $290,000 you just approved for that? Let's go to number two. Can you give me data for the $40,000 you just approved for the Mount Baker Hill Climb Race? Let's go to item three. Do you want me to keep doing this?
There's stuff in there on there.
Do you see this? You're singling out this one item. It's, it's fair to look for, for information on these sorts of things, but I, I, I'm not sure why this one particular item about helping kids in school is demanding more performance measures than these other things that you just, for the sake of time, we're just going to pick, pick on kids and forget, forget the Mount Baker Hill Climb?
That wasn't fair.
No, he singled me out, he singled me out for this.
Have you cut it out?
I'm just...
It's that straw man's argument that he loves to make.
Let's walk the 18 items in, if you want to do that.
Sure, let's go.
So before you do that, I, Ms. Delahunt, I actually wanted you to stay here.
I would love to see the metrics and the data behind every single one of these programs before we throw more money away.
You had to start.
I'm more than happy to have that conversation.
But you'd vote for them all, but singled this one out about this?
No, I didn't vote for them all. There was others that I didn't vote for and asked questions on.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please. So, could you answer a couple of questions for me? How long has this, how long, to the best of your knowledge, how long has this program been running across the country?
Oh, I don't know about across the country, but in Watcom County, it's been several years. It's probably been six or eight years in Watcom County.
And so, and there's a lot of, it's adopted across the state pretty much? Is that fair to say?
Yes, yeah, yes. And it is an evidence-based program, and I, and I saw, in looking at this email, that Joe Fuller did send the email to you this afternoon, Councilmember Bird, so you should have that in your, in your email box. So you can take a look at it, and the other questions that you have, you can certainly ask staff. Joe Fuller will be able to answer the questions for you, I'm sure.
Right, thank you. Mr. Bird, Ms. Brennan, and Mr. Donovan. Sorry, Mr. Sado, Ms. Brennan, and Mr. Donovan.
I don't know the exact stats, but I think, Mr. Bird, it is fair that, to ask these questions, and, and we should scrutinize these things as much as we can. And I'll just relate from my experience that I have been involved with Meridian School District for almost 15 years. And it may not be this particular program. The particular program means that where the money comes from. It, it, there were different sources where the money was coming from before, and even there was federal funds coming through, but I was not interested at that time where the money is coming from, but interested that what the impact it's making. And, and I have the first-hand experience that these funds and, and looking after the at-risk students early is much more profitable, profitable, or you can call it much more effective on the return than we later spend when they are in their mid-20s and other things. If we don't take care of them when they are 12, 15, 18 years old, we spend 10 times more money and we don't blink an eye. So I don't know the exact stats, and I think it's fair to, to ask and get that information, and I, this is something I have said before, that any organization which gets county money, there must be annual report from them. That should be not only to the director, or if you get it, they must be responsible. If they're getting X dollars of money, it could be DVSS, it could be school districts, could be Northwest Youth, anybody, that must be attached to that. They must give an annual report with some kind of stats. And that should automatically get to the public, to the elected people, or anybody else. I think that's something I would request the administration, that if it is not already there, I know, I did ask this question a couple of years ago, and, and county executive did promise and did say that he does get reports, but maybe it's the dissemination of these reports is not widely sent. So I would like to renew my request that if we can come up with a system, that there should be an automatically, whosoever gets the county money for these programs, no matter what those programs are, they must submit an annual report before they apply for next time to get money.
Ms. Brennan?
Well, I, it was probably three, four years ago. I did spend time with Joe Fuller, and I really promote any council members who have different ways of assessing stuff, to take the time to, to contact, we get this, like, you know, it'd be nice if we got it even sooner. We get this about a week ahead, not quite, and if you've got questions before we fight about it on the council floor, I think it would be just really helpful to talk to the people who are involved in this. This is a program I do believe in, and I did take the time to not only research it, but talk to Joe about it, and I'm pleased that we're adding the Blaine School District to it, and I don't, I mean, you shouldn't take my word for it, I don't expect anybody to do that, but I, I think there, it's really good to talk to the staff people, not just wait till the meeting happens and bring it up then, but, you know, do it, talk to them ahead of time, a little bit. And then if you've still got questions, or if you've got the answers, tell us the answers you wanted, too. I'm just suggesting it.
Ms. Donovan, then Mr. Bird.
I will echo the concern for performance measures here, but this was a consent agenda. There were 18 items on it. Nothing could have got out of this committee without your vote. You just said you voted against some of them. You voted against one item, I'm just bringing that item back out of the consent agenda.
I did vote against one, one item, but Mr. Donovan's trying to skew the information to his direction, so it is what it is.
No, no.
No, I think this is an important fact. There were 18 amendments, 18 issues on the consent agenda. You just recommended out of committee all but one of those because you voted for all but one of those.
No, he, he did it, but he didn't, but I was there.
But there's also other items on our finance committee agenda, and I voted against three of them, and I also had conversation on several others, so...
But I just, I'm, just want to make that, it's a fair point. This was a content agenda with 18 items.
I, I'm not sure why you feel so uncomfortable justifying your reason for putting it forward.
Point of procedure. Mr. Donovan has the floor. Mr. Bird can respond.
You're, I mean, this is, we're kind of like getting in the weeds here, but...
Stop!
No, I don't want to, because you said, "I voted against some of these other ones." You were probably speaking about the other items, but in the consent agenda, there was one item that I wanted to bring back that didn't get out of committee. You voted for these 17 other items on that consent agenda. I'm bringing this one back to the, to the committee here.
So the point of the, the discussion needs to be limited to the item in question. Is there any further discussion on item 17? Mr. Donovan, sorry, Mr. Bird.
He's going back.
He looks 10 years, he looks 10 years younger. What are you upset about?
Am I going gray? If I am, it's only because I sit up here.
Look what's going to happen to you.
The, so for some clarity here, I actually have attended several of these events for communities and schools over the last several years, and I know several of their board members, and combined with my personal relationship here, and the fact that when I asked questions, they could give me no data about the program, that is why I said, "I will not vote for it today, but if you can come back in the future with data, then I will." And that's exactly what happened in the meeting earlier, Mr. Donovan, so you can continue to skew the data from that earlier conversation to make it look like I'm voting against kids or something else, but that's exactly what it is. It's skewing the data for, I don't know, political reasons.
Conversation to be limited to the motion at hand. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Mrs. Fresi?
Yeah, I just think anytime we invest in kids, we're doing ourselves a service economically and for our society. Yeah, that keeps kids out of jail, it keeps a lot of, you know, the 100% in school, so anytime we can put money into children, I think we should be all for it. And I think Ms. Delahunt said it was going on for six, 10 years, and usually, as a former teacher, if something's not working, we're going to drop it. So, and with the statistics, keeping kids in school is so important, so I'm for this.
Ms. Brennan?
Well, I'm not as trusting about all the programs as you are, or you, you seem to be, but Joe Full, we are so lucky to have Joe Fuller working for Watcom County, I have to say. He's an amazing person and a wealth of information, and I just suggest that anybody who's got any concerns, I don't know if you still do or not, but he, he's one of my favorites. Sorry, I hate to show favorites, but he's definitely one of my favorites.
There's a discussion on item 17. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next item up?
Other items.
Okay, other items from finance, and now you go back to the first one you were reading, Mr. Bird.
Back around. Okay, so, item number one, ordinance amending the 2018 Watcom County budget 15th request in the amount of $314,598, AB 2018-347, pages 16 through 31 in your packet, that was passed 201 in committee, so moved.
So, and it's been moved for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, with a click, please call the roll.
Barbara Brennan?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sado?
Yes.
That passes 7-0.
Items number two and three were removed today. Item number four, resolution approving the 2019 recommended convention center allocations for tourism-related facilities and activities as defined through RCW 67.28.1816, AB 2018-354, pages 42 through 45, passed in committee 201, so moved.
It's been moved for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
Request authorization for the, item number five, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an inter-local agreement between Watcom County Flood Control Zone District and Watcom Conservation District for Pollution Identification and Correction Program, Non-Dairy Agricultural Best Management Practices, Outreach and Cost Share, and the amount of $55,000. Council acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, AB 2018-355. It's pages 46 through 56 in your packet. It was approved in committee 201, and I so move.
It's been moved for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
Okay, item number six, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watcom County, the... contract amendment between Waukam County, the Port of Bellingham, and the City of Bellingham for the purposes of economic development for a total amended contract amount of three million eight hundred five thousand two hundred eight dollars, AB 2018-369, pages fifty-seven through sixty-four in your packet. That failed in day one, 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 as I did not vote for it because they did not have performance metrics that they could justify.
Need to approve?
Mrs. Donovan moves to approve, is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Buchanan seconds, discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Well, I support it from what I read in there, but what do you mean by performance metrics? I'm not a numbers person as much, so what is, what is performance metrics?
I would like to see that anyone that we're giving money to is able to come back and justify that spend. So if we've funded three point eight million dollars into this program, and the City of Bellingham is not adding additional funding, and they are using that funding to hire a fourth staff member, I want to see that we've generated more than three point eight million dollars in economic impact to our community. And the fact that we aren't showing, and I'm not talking about things that would happen otherwise, right? I mean, Rudd's neighbor's building burns down and they move into his building and rent it, that to me is economic development created by the port. That's unfortunate circumstances that created an opportunity for Councilmember Brown. So what are the things that the port has done with that money to generate economic impact to our community that would not have otherwise been there, and show us the data and the metrics behind that before you ask us for more money? So, again, we've spent now, well, they're asking, yeah, another three point eight million dollars is what they're asking here, so, or amended contract amount. Go ahead.
Point of clarity, I don't believe it's, they're asking for another three point eight.
Yeah, I know it's not another three point eight, usually it's in there.
It's just the key moment of the total.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what is the?
Good question. I don't know the answer.
Usually both items are listed, what the requested increase is, as well as what the total amended amount is on the line.
I just wanted a clarification that this amount, we are talking here, three point eight million dollars, is it accumulative, or is it just for 2018? Or, say, 2019?
Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive for Waukam County. If council turns to page fifty-eight of the packet in the contract information sheet on the left-hand side, you'll see that the contract started in 2017 for an amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. In 2018, it was nine hundred and sixty-seven. Nineteen, it was nine hundred and seventy-four thousand. This amendment is for a three hundred ninety-six thousand dollar increase for 2019. That was to accomplish the fourth FTE and some of the other budgeted item that the Port of Bellingham had, as well as to allocate two hundred thousand dollars for some special projects as it relates to infrastructure and economic development, and then to extend the timeframe to 2020 and 2021 to allow for the newly created Economic Development Office in the Port of Bellingham to have some foundation to move forward.
Mr. Bird, Mr. Sidoo?
Can I continue?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that we did have a discussion on this quite vigorously for almost two years, that when we proposed to actually form the Business Advisory Committee, things like this take time. This is not like selling Starbucks coffee, that you sell a cup, you get four bucks same day. This is like when you talk about economic development in the community, it is like five to seven-year project before you can see that. And this has been missing in our community, that we had an economic development, and it taken several formats. I remember we had a Bellingham, Waukam County Chamber of, not Chamber of Commerce, but Economic Development Council. I don't want to rehash that, but, and then it was totally disbanded. And we went through almost five years of ADO and not having an effective Economic Development Committee. And then, I think I started talking, and Mr. Brown started talking, rest of the council, that we should do something about it in 2016, 17. Then it came about that in 2018, we said, okay, we should form a committee and fund it, and raise the level of that. Before that, Port of Bellingham had a couple of their employees working on this function, and State Department of Commerce funded that partially, and City of Bellingham and Waukam County funded that, the ADO.
Yeah, Tyler Schroeder, again, that's a very good point, Councilmembers, Sidoo. The total comprehensive amount is a total amount from all of a couple of different agencies.
Yes.
The Port of Bellingham, City of Bellingham, the ADO dollars from the state to add up to that total.
This is not three point eight million dollars Waukam County is writing a check for. I think that a lot of times the confusion comes in because there's a little bit of history behind these things. So this is an effort we just started, like practically a couple of months ago. And I think that we need to wait till next two, three years, but having a scrutiny and reporting and everything is a good thing, and we should keep them on their toes that what you guys are doing, what is happening. But this is not really the true picture of that. We are writing, county is writing three point eight million dollar check for economic development, and we don't get anything for it. I would support this because we have just started this in new format, and this is something we are really missing in our community, the economic development function.
Bird, then Ms. Brenner?
I think economic development is an important part of our community and an important part of what government does. The three point eight million dollars, whether or not it's broken up between Waukam County, the City of Bellingham, the port, and the state, it's still taxpayer dollars. It's still ultimately coming from each and every single person in this room, and every single one of our family members that lives here, and our neighbors as well, and ultimately our kids at some point in time. I think that money needs to be spent wisely and justly, and I think that instead of handing money out, that we should be asking people how they are using that money and to be accountable for the success of that money. While this program is new, it went from zero people to saying, hey, we need one person to oversee it, that one person then said, well, I need one more person, then needed one more person, then we were at three, and now, you know, less than a year later, we need one more person, then there's four. So now we're gonna have a fourth person, and yet there still is no data that someone can point to that says this is the impact that all three, and now the fourth person is gonna be spending their time developing. There's no way for us to say this is what that money's been spent on and the impact we see it having down the road, or the impact that we're having now. What I have heard is that the individual that's in charge of the programs come forward and told us multiple times about all the community groups that he participates in, and all of the government meetings that he goes to. But to me, I don't see how that creates economic development and brings more jobs into our community. It seems like a political position, like the rest of us, and what we should be doing. And if that's economic development, then I ask, why do we need someone else to do more meetings when that's apparently what we were hired to do? So for me, unless they can justify it, and just like earlier, I don't feel like I'm unreasonable. There are facts and data and metrics for something, that's what I'm looking for, that's what I want to hear, that's what should justify our spending. In the lack of that, we should have accountability, and that accountability should come in the lack of additional funding. So that's where I'm at, and that's why I voted against it, and why I will vote against it again, unless someone can actually give me data behind the program that shows why it's working.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, again, I'm not a data person, but these are the projects it's talking about, and I support all of them. Facilitate countywide rural broadband study, which we have to get done, we have to start providing, somewhere, providing rural broadband. And the interest, and I want to just stop before I go on to the next ones. To me, there's certain functions of different parts, like the Port of Bellingham. When it comes to economic development, I always think of the Port of Bellingham because it was created to do that. So I have no problem with that. The number of people, I never like any people to get on this stuff, but these are important projects. Facilitate master plan of Cherry Point District, I'm supportive of that, and facilitate the master plan of, this is real economic development, of residential and industrial infrastructure adjacent to the Interstate Five Corridor. They sound like they're gonna bring in business, jobs, and development, and that to me sounds like what we're talking about with this. I mean, I don't know. That's just my interpretation of what I read.
Mr. Bird, Mr. Sidoo?
Ms. Brenner, I totally appreciate that. I feel like all government organizations, organizations sound like they are gonna do a good job and they have great intentions. The question is, when does that actually happen, or does it happen? And I think that it's worth noting, I didn't actually ask for more time for that reason, but I actually have a contract with the port for economic development that we won't be continuing. So voting against this actually votes against any personal favor that I would potentially get through that contract, but, so, for the record.
I appreciate you sticking to your guns, but I just see it different, yeah.
Mrs. Sidoo?
I don't think that port cares that if one of the council member votes for or against, they have their business to do, and in the community on the merit of proposals. I would like to give you example from private business. Suppose there's a business and they see a new opportunity, they say, okay, it's gonna take four years to develop, like whatever it was, Amazon, guy walks into Seattle, wanna sell books online, and it took him twenty years after selling the first book, and a lot of investment. So some of these things are not like black and white. Like I said, you sell a cup of coffee and say, okay, give me four bucks. These, and especially community projects, or even in private business, you go on a limb and invest five, ten, twenty million, or a billion dollars on an idea, and work like hell to make it success, and there are trials and revolutions. These things cannot be seen as a cash register transactions. I think that that view, over time, yes, that what we put in, what we getting it for. We spent four trillion dollars as United States government. If we, if we take that measure, I don't think that we need to pay no taxes. We don't need to do nothing. Let's just sit home, because it's money wasted. So I think that we shouldn't take that pessimistic view. They are developing F-35, five hundred billion dollars. So I'll just stop there, but this is, this is not only government, private business does the same thing. You cannot just get, hey, I'm gonna spend my dollar today, and gonna get two dollars tomorrow back. You don't do that. It doesn't happen.
Confirm my sequence, are you next, Mr. Bird? And then Ms. Frazee.
Yeah, I'm not voting against no spending on this project, by the way. I'm voting against an increase in spending. Budgeted for this progress project is already nine hundred thousand dollars that they're gonna get next year, and another billion, two, that they're gonna get the year after that. My vote on this is against increasing that amount so that they can hire more people without the data to show the success. So I'm okay with them continuing the economic development and seeing if it pans out with the budget we've already given them, not giving them more money.
Ms. Frazee, then myself.
I think having, you know, putting the money into the people we need so that we have a master plan, because the master plan is going to help with, you know, housing, they're gonna look at economic development, they're gonna look at land use, everything. And we need to make sure that's in place, so we're not just getting sporadic, whoever comes to our, who decides to come and put down business here. We want to attract innovative businesses that will provide the family wage jobs for us in the county. You know, we have a few now, but we really, because of the increase in housing, we do need prices, we do need jobs that will provide so we can actually live here. So having that, and, you know, making sure, I only went to one of the port, port meetings, and I thought the people talking about economic development really are coming up with a really good plan. And I think having a plan in place is extremely important when we are gonna be growing so much, so I'll be voting for it.
I was involved in a lot of the early discussions on this in terms of redirecting economic development funds towards the hiring of the new Economic Development Director at the port, and also for the formation of the Business Advisory Council. And a lot of the discussion, I think, may have occurred before you joined us, so just, forgive me if it didn't, but the intent was to provide the Business Advisory Council to give much clearer direction as to where there was the economic development opportunities, and to then have that being directed by a new Economic Development Director with more experience. And with a fundamental difference in approach, which was, county, the county's economic development strategy for most of its life has been, with an exception back in, I think it was the seventies, which we'll come back to in a minute, for most of its life had been reactive. In other words, they used to sit there waiting for the phone to ring, and then they'd respond to whoever said, I wanted, I'm interested in doing something in the county. And I believe, based on my business experience, that the county should be working out what it has of value to sell to prospective employers, and then encouraging them to open branch offices in the community. The last time the community actually did this, if you're talking about data, here's some good data, because it affected my thoughts on this a lot, was that Tim Douglas, the former mayor of Bellingham, in the seventies was a very, was one of the leaders in a program when the county was really suffering economically, to do exactly that, they did, they worked out what they had of value, and they went at it and they started selling it, and they did two key things that we still are reaping the benefit of today. One is they got the Port of Alaska's southern, southern terminal shifted from Seattle to Bellingham, that's why it is here. It wasn't until that activity done by that group of people had been undertaken. And the second thing is they went very aggressively after Canadian businesses looking to have a foothold in the US market. And between those two activities, they generated three thousand new jobs. So that's my hope with this exercise. It is a long-term process, it took them several years to get there, but that's the logic behind it, certainly from my perspective. Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven, sorry, six to one, with Mr. Bird opposed.
Item number seven, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a local agency agreement amendment between Waukam County and Washington State Department of Transportation for the West Badger Road, Bertrand Creek Bridge Number Fifty replacement project, in the amount of three million one hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars, for a total amended contract amount of three million three hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars, AB 2018-363, pages sixty-five through seventy-two in your packet. That was passed in committee two zero one, I so move.
For approval.
Need move for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven, zero.
Item number eight, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Waukam County and SteriCycle Environmental Solutions to extend the agreement to operate the disposal of toxics facilities. Shouldn't I say toxic facilities, the S?
Toxic facility, it's a facility.
Several different.
Isn't that the one out of the airport?
Okay, all right, it's just throwing me off. The disposal of toxics facility for an additional three years, in the amended amount of one million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty thousand dollars, for a total contract amount of three million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred sixty dollars, AB 2018-374, pages seventy-three through eighty-one in your packet, that passed in committee two zero one, and I so move.
Need move for approval, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven, zero.
Last but not least, ordinance authorizing the 2019 Waukam County Unified Fee Schedule from eleven twenty, AB 2018-332, pages three fifty-five through four twenty-nine in your packet, and that failed in committee one, one, one.
Need to approve?
Mrs. Donovan moves to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Frazee seconds, discussion, Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I'm not supporting this because we tabled it last time so we could get specifics. There were absolutely no specifics given to us, except what we got the first time, which keeps saying, increase staff costs, increase staff costs, increase staff costs. Well, what really bothers me is it's a different percentage on each one of these things, and some of them. some of them is huge and some of it not so much. And it's not giving us any specifics. I want to know why, what, and you know, explain to me on each one. We used to get that information and it was, these changes were explained in way more detail than this and because I don't consider this any detail at all. And so I'm always kind of apprehensive about increasing fees to people anyway, but I sure want to be able to tell individuals on each fee why, and I'm not supporting it.
Further discussion? Bird?
I'll just add to that. We held it two weeks ago, was it two weeks ago? Yeah, two weeks ago, in lieu of a presentation to go over what the fees were. At that time, it was told to us that it wasn't crucial that this get approved right away with the rest of the budget. And so we had asked for a presentation to come back. We got 10 minutes squeezed into a crazy day to say, hey, what questions do you have instead of a presentation to go over everything? So I definitely side with Councilmember Brenner on this. I'm interested in what the cost increases are and what we tell constituents when they come and ask us why we're raising fees on these items.
Ms. Sidhu, then, Ms. Brenner.
I was going to say that this unified fee schedule has been with us for more than two weeks. And what county executive asked us, that please mark specific items which you have questioned about. Like when you see majority of the fees, there is no change. There are some, there have been change. Just saying that, you know, we don't like the fee schedule is great, but what are these specific items? Has anybody, like actually, the best thing would be to mark them in a red ink, make a picture, send it back to the county executive a week before, say, these are the ones I want to listen about. And he did offer that he can have every department head present here. I was not in the committee meeting, so, but I remember the procedure. So did we ask that? Did anybody sent to the county executive that we don't agree with? Item number 1822, fee for this, it's increased by $2, why it's increased? Like making generic inferences that we don't like fee schedule, that's life. It's fee schedule, right? So not that I agree with everybody or everything, but I think the homework is that somebody has a question about it, they need to look it up and say that I don't agree with this line item and please explain. So I don't know, did that happen or not?
Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I did write a letter to the executive.
And you didn't get any answers?
I got an answer saying it's in the packet thing and I went and looked at the packet thing and there was, it was exactly what we had originally. And I said, I wanted specifics and I could have done, I have, there's about, you know, if you really feel that way, you should vote no on this and then we will have most of the fees be the same and the ones that are increased won't happen until we get a better explanation. And I did do my due diligence and do that. Of course, I could have done every single one of them, but I did what I thought would, I mean, I thought I did it in committee two weeks ago. I was very specific that this wasn't enough information. So I wrote again when we didn't get anymore and said, I want the specifics. They're not the same amount on each one, they're not the same percentage of increase. So when you say increased staff costs, they could mean a whole bunch of different things. On every single one that says increased staff costs, I want to know the specifics of why, what, and how. And I couldn't have made it more clear when I said it two weeks ago and I'm making it clear now. And I really don't appreciate when you say, oh, just because you don't like fees or you don't like, no, you're right, I don't like fees, but that's not why I did this. And my, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be questioning my motives. You should just either agree or not agree, but you keep putting inferences about what my motives are.
I.
Ms. Sidhu Donovan. Ms. Sidhu, do you want to respond?
I just wanted to say that I'm sorry if I'm giving you impression that I'm picking on you. I don't want to pick on you and I never have intention to pick on you, but I should be able to express what I feel exactly the same way you can express what you feel.
Brenner.
Yes, you can, but I'm saying I don't appreciate you questioning my motives since you're not inside my head.
I'm not.
You can do whatever, yes, you did. You said it infers this and it infers that. That's not why I'm concerned about these increases.
I did not say Ms. Brenner is asking this. I said, did anybody or everybody look through and sent an email and got an answer or not? That's what I said. I didn't pick on you.
Counselmember.
I didn't.
Mr. Bird.
To answer your question, Councilmember Sidhu, I did not. I was under the impression that it was going to be similar to how we do everything else in which we're going to get an actual presentation where they would walk through it on the projector and then break it down. And from there, I would know how they justify the fee increases and then I could decide whether or not I thought that that was a good justification or not. But without that presentation, I'm just looking at fee increases and I don't know whether I agree or not. So that was my expectation today. So I did not do that for that reason, but.
So my own personal opinion on this is that I, there are areas I want to see changed. There are some explanations in particular I want to receive regarding the fees that we are charging people who are incarcerated. I don't want those fees to further increase the likelihood of recidivism. So for example, fees imposed on students who are trying to continue their schooling while they are incarcerated. So, but I am satisfied with the county, and sorry, there's another area too, which is on fees related to changes in the way we're going to do some of the parks programs. That being said, I'm satisfied with the commitment that the executive has given that we will, if we approve this tonight and allow them to enact it into the schedule for 2019, that early in 2019, we will reopen the issue and address the specific areas of concern. Ms. Brenner.
Well, you do have a different option and that would be to not approve this. We would stick with the same fees. In fact, I will compromise with you, the new fees, there's new fees on things like printing and stuff like that. I don't have any problem with those. The ones I have a problem with were the, these like vague things, staff costs, period. Some of them have all kinds of other explanations. Some of them are new fees, I didn't have any problem with them. So I make a motion that we pass the new fees and the fees that have an explanation like printing and things like that, but not any of the ones that just say increased staff cost. That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor already.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, and I call the question.
Okay, the question's been called, it's not debatable. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
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 Opposed?
What?
We're calling the question, we're taking a vote on calling the question.
Hmm, which question?
The original motion is to approve the ordinance.
So you don't want to consider changing the motion?
The motion's not debatable, Ms. Brenner.
I have a motion on the table.
I know, I'm asking you to consider.
All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
That passes five to two. Now we vote on the main motion, all in favor of the main motion, which was to approve the unified fee schedule.
It's an ordinance.
The voice.
Sorry, ordinance, you're correct. Ms. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
No.
Todd Donovan. Carol Frazer.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidhu.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
No.
That passes five to two with Brenner and Bird opposed. Next item is Public Works, Ms. Brenner.
Okay, Public Works. We had this item in Public Works, request authorization of 90-day extension for council approval of the Glacier Water District Comprehensive Water System Plan. That was a mouthful. And we spoke about this in committee and I believe there was interest in reconsidering this since they have an excellent plan and they've gone through all the hoops that they needed to go through. There are other problems, but they don't really deal with this particular water district and their more global problems that we have. But, so I moved in committee to recommend to the council to reconsider and so this is my first motion. I moved to rescind the motion approved November 7, 2018, which delayed council decision on a resolution approving the Glacier Water District Water Comprehensive System Plan until January 29, 2009. That's my first motion because we have to undo what we did before we can consider the other thing.
And I assume you mean January 29, 2019.
What? Oh, did I say 2018?
2009.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant 2019.
Right, so.
Ooh.
That was your motion, so that was your motion. Mr. Donovan was the second, correct? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
And before, I'm going to do my second motion now, but I just can't help but resolutions have no force of law, so this, that first thing, you know, the whole thing was, we were so worried about the law and everything and it just occurred to me, this was a resolution. Anyway, my second motion, I approve, I move approval of the resolution approving the Glacier Water District Water Comprehensive System Plan.
Second.
Moved in second and the version we are talking about?
The one that was, that we originally had and was postponed?
No.
Yeah, okay, yes, salmon or whoever says. Orange, whatever. Oh, is it pink? Pink? Okay.
It was this one then?
Yeah.
For motion, it's been Mr. Donovan, Mr. Buchanan seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next item up is.
Okay, that's not me.
Next item up is a resolution regarding the health protection for immigrant families. Sorry, that shows from.
Yeah, we had this in Public Works and it came out of Public Works with, we had everybody 3-0 vote to approve. And I believe the council, the council chair has a letter of support for it to go with it. Definitely.
I need, well, I need, I have a motion, I need a second before we can have discussion.
It came out of committee.
And discussion now.
Sorry, you're right.
It's discussion.
So discussion.
I'd like to know what the point of this is. What are we trying to do?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner.
Can he answer?
Oh, sure, you can answer. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So as I understand it, the Department of Homeland Security Office of Policy and Strategy is seeking input from county governments around the country regarding restricting the access to public health services for people who are undocumented. The problem, I see that as two fundamental problems. One is that public health, which is separate from the private healthcare that you get in an emergency room or your GP, public health is things like dealing with, you know, communicable diseases or, you know, water quality and so forth. It's the general health of the herd, so to speak. And it is in the best interest of all of us to make sure that anybody we come in contact with is not conveying a communicable disease. The second problem I have with this is it makes no distinction between people who are undocumented, non-US citizens are undocumented, or US citizens who simply can't provide documentation, of which there is a significant amount in the community. And so if this is enacted, we will see both undocumented residents and US citizens who are born here being denied access to public health services because they can't prove their identity or their eligibility. Ms. Brenner had a hand up in the Mr. Bird.
Well, it also includes people who are here legally, they're not US citizens, but are here legally and either don't have documentation but are here legally. So there's like three. And there was one other thing that I wanted to just piggyback on what you said. Yeah, okay, I want to do it, but should I do it now or wait till after?
Well, it depends on what you're trying to do because.
Well, you talked about why it's important and to me, one of the big reasons it's important too is that nothing makes these kinds of decisions. I checked with the sheriff's office too because I was concerned about us interfering with, you know, other legal parts of the government. And the couple of them, and I hope I can say the undersheriff because he was one of the ones I talked to, said we could do more harm than good by not supporting something like this because it could cause a lot of problems, including not only increased costs for the county, but increased, oh, red tape of all this stuff that we would have to do on paperwork. And you, oh, I know what it was. You said the thing about, we're not, we're only talking about government, we're not talking about if they go to private places like, but we are because if they go to an emergency room, I can't imagine that an emergency room can turn away anybody. I don't think they can.
But that's not covered by this particular, this is about public county, public health departments.
But I'm saying you'll have less emergency room usage if you allow people to get care without ending up in the emergency.
Absolutely.
That's all I meant.
Yeah. I mean, to your point, Ms. Brenner, I would much rather use public health dollars to deal with a person irrespective of their immigrant status who is exhibiting signs of a communicable disease early than leave them untreated and then have them hospitalized for months or longer because of their advanced state of ill health.
And contagious.
And contagious as well. Mr. Bird.
I'm a bit confused on this one because that's the way it was presented last time was this is about community health and preventing communicable diseases that could wipe out an entire city or a state or something to that nature. But as I read this, that isn't mentioned anywhere within this document. Rather, I see it say, recent immigration and customs enforcement raids and detentions in Waukam County have caused immigration families significant trauma resulting in mental health concerns, not communicable diseases. Fear of detention and deportation have caused families to avoid seeking needed medical and social services, not communicable diseases. Changes to federal laws are being proposed that would cut off government health benefits and housing for illegal immigrants and families, not communicable diseases. Federal benefits such as supplemental nutritional assistance programs, Section 8 housing vouchers and healthcare services, again, not communicable diseases or public health. It goes on and on. I mean, everything in here goes to that point and what I don't see in here is communicable diseases. So either this is a political statement or it's us giving free social services to illegal immigrants when 12% of our country who are American citizens still don't have access to those same healthcare benefits. So I'm a little concerned if it's communicable diseases and that's why we're passing this for the safety of our community, then why aren't all of these whereas is describing all of the impacts from that versus these individuals not getting housing and not getting healthcare and not getting Section 8 and so on and so forth.
Before you go, Ms. Brenner, I'd like to make a comment and then I'd like to give it to the Health Department. Do you understand that the tone of what is going, being attempted at the federal level is to deny, ultimately deny, a path to citizenship to even legal immigrants who draw too, in the opinion of the people crafting this legislation, draw too much upon public services for any reason. So you're going to have someone who's a green card holder, who in the opinion of certain people in the federal government draw too much on public services while they are a green card holder, the intent is to deny them a path to citizenship.
So again, I'm confused. So is this about communicable diseases as it was presented two weeks ago? Or is it about giving free healthcare and free housing and free food to people who broke the law and came into the country illegally?
By the way, this is not, this is not, I'm not sure where you're drawing the distinction. This is only, this is about.
I'm just reading the whereas is in the document that you're asking us to approve.
Right, I defer to the Health Department on this.
So Regina Delhan, Public Health Director. I think this is about both things, all right? As Councilmember Brown was saying, what the public charge, what the public charge rule is looking at is changing, changing the requirements, lowering. charge rule is looking at is changing, changing the requirements, lowering the limit, changing how the federal government looks at whether or not someone is a public charge, and reducing that down to almost no benefits for them or their families. And we're talking about people that are here with a green card seeking citizenship. And what would be happening is if their children, who are citizens, or many of them would be legal citizens, if they are, say, enrolled in a WIC program, then the person that's seeking citizenship, the parent, would lose their green card status when the child is entitled to, to WIC, or to benefits, or to other benefits, or to the CHIP program, which is the Child Health Program. So we're talking about that aspect. And, and then we're also talking about you as, acting as the Health Board, are responsible for ensuring that the health of all of our community is protected. So Councilmember Brown is correct in that if a child cannot get, whether the child is a, a, a citizen, whether they're, whatever their status is, if they cannot get access to immunizations, if they can, if, if people have communicable diseases or contract communicable diseases and they can't get treatment, then that has an impact on the entire community. I think one other point, you know, beyond, beyond just the communicable disease aspect of it, or the individual, the individual getting healthcare, I think that as the Health Board, if you look at our Community Health Improvement Plan, which you all have, have seen many times, and if you look at the Strategic Plan for the Health Department, we're very concerned, and I think the Health Board is very concerned, about the health of all people in the community. Everyone in our community, whether they're, whether they're citizens, whether they have green cards, anyone that is in our community has, has the, the right to be healthy.
They're here illegally, they don't have the right to do that on taxpayer dollars.
And if, if the, if the federal, if the federal benefits are, are reduced, we as the county are going to be the provider of last resort, and we're going to be responsible for having to help people with their healthcare needs from both a population health aspect as well as from the individual aspect, because we care about our community members. So that's, that's what I would say. I would like, Rachel Lucy is here, and she has sat through a lot of the previous part of the meeting, and I would, she is our Public Health Advisory Board Chair, and the Public Health Advisory Board was approached by members of the community and asked if they could approach the Health Board and see what could be done to, to really alleviate some of the problems that are going on in the community. If you, there's two things in your packet, and I think that's probably where it's getting confusing. There is a letter, a public comment letter to the federal government related to the public charge rule, and then there's another, then there's the resolution itself, right? And the resolution itself has, has two elements that were, that are being asked of the, of the Health Board, and one is to make comment to the federal government about things such as the public charge rule, which could limit benefits to people seeking, seeking citizenship. And then the other thing that it asks is that the Public Health Advisory Board be given the charge to put together a task force to take a look at how we can, how we can systematize the providing health and social service systems to people that are being impacted in our community, rather than what's happening now is, you know, different, different entities are piecemealing, piecemealing or band-aiding situations, but how can we really serve people in the best way and in a way that's gonna protect the health of all our citizens? So I would like Rachel to say a few words on behalf of the Public Health Advisory Board.
Please go ahead.
So Rachel Lucy, here.
I don't know if it's on, Rachel.
Regina so eloquently touched on many of the points I was gonna make, but just to, one of the really important things, just to draw your attention on the back of the resolution is the, the third for it to be resolved. I think we're facing a time period where, while there are local organizations doing great things to look at how these immigrant families have been impacted locally in Waukam County, that's just a short-term fix. And what we would like to do on behalf of the Public Health Advisory Board is convene a group to look at long-term, how do we support members of our community who may be living in fear that they have a family member that potentially could be detained or deported, and that may be a family member that they rely on for their household income and their thriving. Many of the families that we heard from in this most recent raid of Granite Precast have children or spouses who are legal citizens and members of our community in Waukam County, and now their primary wage earner has, has been taken from the family. And we have raised, just locally, three of these local organizations raised $200,000 in a month to support the, the legal proceedings, but also the, the short-term impacts, the making sure they had food, housing, were able to get to school. So we're seeing the impacts widespread, not just those 16 families that were impacted, but the friends, the extended relatives, the families of those families. And I think this is something that's been going on much longer than just this most recent raid, that there, to have the awareness that we have friends and neighbors who have been living in fear is often a very hush-hush conversation. So I just, I just thank you for your support and for thoughtfully considering this tonight.
I'd like to ask you both to stay, because I think there's some more questions. It's Mr. Donovan, Ms. Brenner, Mr. Bird, and then myself.
I'd like to thank you for putting this together. In the packet, and I'm trying to make sure, make sure the public understands this, the original packet, we had a, a letter that you included from the National Association of Counties who sees this as an important issue to county governments in terms of the potential public health costs, national, a letter from the National Association for County and City Health Officials, which is Nacho. It's new to me. But they're, they're making the, the point about the public charge thing, is that the Trump administration is, it could, I assume it could be, if you're a legal child, you get WIC services, you go to school, you're in the CHIP program, you seek immunization, any kind of healthcare SNAP benefits, that they're gonna ratchet the, the level down at which then the parent, who could potentially also be a legal resident, would not be able to, to remain or get a green card. So, so there is that Trump thing. But the fear for us locally is, no, that's, seriously, what?
Actually, no, for me, it's not. I kinda...
This is a federal registrar proposal from the Trump administration. Okay, so, so there's that. But in terms of us locally, that this is gonna create incentives for people then to not have their children seek immunizations or go to school or, or receive any sort of benefits, even if they're legal residents and the children of taxpaying neighbors who are here. So it's, but two things, we need to send a signal to people that, I like the phrase here, that we'll see compassionate approaches, but that we need to, part of this is sending a signal to the federal government, saying that this is a dangerous change to the federal registrar in term, in terms of regulations, and then try and do some, the second and third, be it their resolve, is to do some stuff locally to see how we can deal with this stuff on the ground. And I, I thank you for putting that together.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, for me, that wasn't it at all. And what it's about for me, I, your timing really sucked on this, because I completely resent people trying to charge the border and all these things that are happening that I feel are undermining our country. But to me, it's about healthcare and being, and I have to disagree with you on one thing. I think whatever, to me, we offer this stuff to everybody. So you talk about the people who are American citizens who don't have this access, well, they should in Waukam County, we've got the programs here in Waukam County, and if you know anybody who doesn't, they need to get ahold of me or get ahold of the Health Department, because those programs are for everybody. But I, you know, there's two different issues here. One's a political issue, and that's not my issue. My issue is I'm really concerned about the spread of communicable diseases. I would, you know, I felt in the resolution itself, it was pretty well-stated, it was medical, health, all that. And I just feel like we have to make sure people are safe and healthy, and I don't want that to be an open-door invitation for people to break down the borders. But I don't think that they're part of the same thing.
Mr. Bird?
If it's just communicable diseases, that's fine, but it doesn't say that in here. It's a broad healthcare, mental health, housing, and other social services. That's what we're offering. It's not healthcare for communicable diseases. If we wanted to go back and correct it and say, hey, we'll do it just for this issue, great, that sounds perfect, I'm more than willing to support that, but to open the door and say, it's for healthcare, it's for social services, it's for housing, will you tell me, will you house someone who comes into the country illegally through this program?
Um, no, that's, that probably would not happen. We're, what we're talking about here...
Probably will not, or will not? Can you hear?
Well, well, if it's a federal program, you have to have documentation in order to, to obtain housing, right? But if you are someone that's seeking, you're here legally, you have a green card, you're seeking citizenship, then you would be eligible for these benefits. And in, and in lots of cases, the relatives of the person that's seeking citizenship are American citizens, the children were born here, the spouse may be a, a US citizen.
So again, I'm confused then, because before, when this came up, Ms. Brenner put a proposal together to add in the word legal, and we supported that. And if legal's in there, and what you're saying is true, then it wouldn't matter if legal's in there, because only people that would be going through the program and getting access to the services that you described would be legal people. Children that are here legally, that's fantastic, I'm okay with that. But it's only if that's true that that would be the case. If it's not true, then legal only becomes a problem if you're going to give services to people who are here illegally. So the question is, why can't we have the word legal in there if we're not gonna be offering services to people who aren't here illegally?
Okay, so I was next on the list. So I'll answer those questions as best I can. First off, who, who is going to determine the legal status of someone who apply?
She just said it's a federal program.
No, I know that, I know that, but, but we had this discussion earlier on. If a US citizen comes to you now but can't prove they're a US citizen, will you deny them federal program benefits?
Yes.
Right.
Because we have to have, we have to have identification.
So, I, 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 no, no, she has, they have to have identification. The problem is 7% of the US population has no identification. US citizen population.
That they have to have identification to go through the program?
No, no, I know that, that's what I'm saying. Because if you, if you impose, and, yes...
So you're gonna know whether they're legal or not when they apply for the program?
No, no, if you're applying for a federal program at the moment, if you are a US citizen applying for federal benefits, for example, WIC, Women Infant Children, if you apply for WIC and you are a US citizen but can't prove you're a US citizen, you will be denied WIC services.
That's not what I, I asked, someone that goes through the program that's in this resolution, if they are illegal, will you put them through the program? Will you give them housing through this resolution if they are illegal?
She said no.
But not, not if, not if it's a federal program, we cannot do that. We could not do that. But, but this goes, it goes beyond, see, there's two things. There's the federal program and the federal charge rule, and then there's what I was talking about earlier, in that there are citizens in our community, or people who are here legally or illegally in our community that we care about, that need support, right? We, as the government, are not necessarily going to be the ones that are supporting people who are of illegal status, because we cannot do that with the funding that we have available. But there's others in the community that can do that. And part of public's health, public health's role is to, is to bring people together, bring the community together, to figure out how we can alleviate situations for...
So are you suggesting that we help other nonprofit organizations than support the people that are here illegally? Is that it?
Mr. Bird, Mr. Bird, point of order here. So if you may, I had, I had the floor, and we're engaging in a debate which is contrary to the Council rules. So if I may, I will, I will respond to your question, then I will yield the floor to you. And then Ms. Brenner had her hand up after that. So, for clarity, if someone applies for a federal program at the moment, such as WIC, and, and they are, they have no documentation, or they are, either because they are an undocumented immigrant, or because they are a US citizen who has lost their identification, they will not get federal benefits, they will not get federal housing, they will not get WIC, they will not get access to any of those programs, period, even if the US citizen. If, if, for example, it is a child who is a US citizen, but the parent is undocumented, then the problem is that the parent is reluctant to bring the child for federal services because they're concerned about the fact that we are inquiring as to the immigration status, even if it's just for the child. The other problem, and this is what really concerns me, because that's really been the way, that's been the way it's been for, I don't know, forever, hasn't it, pretty much? So nothing's changing there. What is changing now is the federal government, there is the public charge rule, and please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, that it sets a threshold for which if you use too much public services, you are denied a path to citizenship, even if you are here legally, such as on a spousal visa. If, for example, you're on a spousal visa and your husband dies, or your, your wife dies, and you're unable to support yourself for whatever reason, and you draw too much on the public purse because of what, because of the circumstances, the, what they're proposing is significantly lowering the threshold to say, okay, you took too much public money, you're not allowed to stay here, right? And that's where I have a fundamental deep problem with this. So it's not about, this is, you can't, if you insert the word legal, you are starting to ask everybody to become immigration inspectors. Anyway, I now will yield the floor to you.
All right, go ahead.
I, I feel like we're playing word games here to get around this. I'm asking a specific question about the legal versus illegal, you're saying yes, but, oh, then there's this other route around, and so at the end of the day, it sounds like what you're saying is, if someone has, is here illegally, we're gonna get them support. And that support's probably gonna come through some sort of taxpayer dollars, regardless of whether it's directly from the county or whether it's a nonprofit that we fund. It's, we're gonna support this program because it's communicable diseases, but now, you know, it's gonna be everything else. If we wanna support legal kids here, or legal families here, and we wanna write a resolution for that, I'm 100% for it. If we wanna support health services that prevent communicable diseases for people that are here illegal, and it's specific to that, I'm more than willing to support that, because that is a general health thing. But to create something this broad, that basically says, we're gonna get free healthcare, free housing, and free social services to everyone, even while we know they're here illegally, and specifically, the way it's written is, I, I think this is written very specifically so that it targets people that are here illegally, and I think that's the point of this. I think that's wrong, considering that 12% of our country doesn't have healthcare, that 800 people in Waukam County are homeless, and 500 million people in the United States are homeless and don't have homes. And yet you're gonna be allowed to come into the country by, not 500 million, 500,000, 50,000, I saw that, I got that number wrong, I agree. 500,000, thank you. Still, we have a lot of US citizens that aren't getting those services, and we're gonna be giving them to people who are here illegally. That, that's wrong. It's, it's wrong.
Mrs. Sider, then Ms. Brenner? Oh, sorry, sorry, Ms. Brenner, then Mr. Sider.
Thank you. See, I don't read it this way at all. I love the, this is my favorite part of the resolution. "Changes to federal law may discourage immigrants and their families, whether legal or illegal, from seeking federal health benefits such as Medicaid or the Children's Health Insurance Program, which is available to everybody, not just immigrants." So this whole thing of saying, we've got all these people who don't have it, well, they can apply the same as anybody else, although they could be in trouble if this thing happens, because they might not, especially homeless people, might not have adequate identification. Anyway, "Resulting in health impacts to those families, decreased health status of our community," which really concerns me, "and increased cost to county budgets," which also concerns me. I, the problem is, and I started off with, I'm the one who put the legal in there, that's why I called the sheriff's office, because I was wondering if that was a concern, and they, you know, it was like, be careful what you wish for, because it might... because it might just end up costing you way more and getting less what you, what you need. And that's what got my attention. And the first person that got my attention, I'm going to, is Mike Cohen from the food bank. When I saw the letter from him, I real, you know, he was talking about, you know, food bank, not anything else, just basic, the food. And he was saying that, you know, there are people who are concerned, who are here legally, who are worried about being deported, and being charged, and being this, and being that. And we don't have, we're not in a position locally to identify status and make those kinds of decisions. Not only will it make more work, I really don't want this to look in any way as though it's a, a, you know, open house for people to charge our borders. That's really bothered me, that's why the timing was kind of weird on this whole thing. But I do think that, I, and I didn't realize the impacts that were happening, especially at the food bank. So, it changed my mind. And I'm not, you know, I don't have that worry personally, so I can't put my, myself in the position of somebody who does, who may be here legally, and still is concerned, because they might be seen as something. It's, it's one of those things that, this is about, to me, health. And the other stuff, I would like to see it go a certain way, but I, I don't want it to interfere with the health of the community at all.
Ms. Sidhu.
Let me put it in a different perspective. Satyal Sidhu goes to Texas in a hotel, leaves his wallet, goes on the highway, gets an accident, he's unconscious, and the ambulance comes. Look at me, I can't talk. They look at my wallet, can't find anything, can't find my ID, and they turn their lights off and leave. This guy is illegal, this guy has no ID. No, no, I just wanted, I just want to put the perspective in.
But that's not a possibility.
No, it's not, it is, in, in a way, let, let me tell you another thing. Next time, Satyal goes to ER, doesn't have ID. So they say, well, either you bring $10,000 with you, or we're not going to touch you. We don't do that in America. We don't ask person that, do you have money on you? Or are you legal citizen? Now, let me talk about the legal. Let me talk about the first, the 12 million people do not have healthcare. Are we assuming that these 12 million people don't have healthcare because of the, we have so many illegal people in here? Is that the reason that these 12 million people don't have healthcare? That's ridiculous. The other thing is, what is illegal? That the whole notion of this word illegal is flawed, totally flawed. It's, it's, it's a great radio talk show argument. Tell me, these people have been here 20 years, and they are employed, they have kids, they own homes. And, 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 and we call them illegal? Because who allowed them to come here? Have we ever talked about the companies who give them jobs? What about them? Because they love them. Look at the construction industry, look at the egg industry, look at the meatpacking plants. 60, 70% of the people employed there, they love that. It is not a wonderful thing that people just come across the thing, and, and they magically start living here. We allow them, we make it possible, and we look the other way, because we cannot tell the business people that how you come, you have 60% workforce employed, and you, they have no documents. Nobody talks about that. And we, it's easy to think, let's put a label of illegal on them. Human beings are not illegal, they are people. Now, if we have a broken immigration system, then that's what we should be talking about. It, it's totally baseless to label people, they are illegals.
Ms. Freyze.
Um, could I ask Mr. Bird a question?
Oh, yeah, please.
Okay, um, so if this, if there is a child with a, a parent who is undocumented, um, what do you, and is very ill, what do you suggest?
I believe the, uh, I believe it's required by doctors to, that they have to serve a patient, right? That if you have a patient there that's ill, in an emergency room. They, uh, that's my understanding. So, the, but otherwise, if, if the child's sick, and the parents can pay with cash, that's fine. Otherwise, I think that they need to go, it's a difficult situation, but they need to go back to their home country, where they have family and support and benefits, or, or that network of resources, where they can do that. They, um, but at the end of the day, it's, for me, no, we're not, it's a matter, if you have extra funds, and you have veterans laying out here, sick in the road, that can't get medical insurance, and can't get a house, and you're saying, I got an extra $1,000, I'm going to give it and prioritize it to someone that I know is here that broke the law versus- But it is, read this, I mean, it's very straightforward, y'all. It's healthcare, mental health, housing, other social services. I'm sorry, it was your floor.
Okay, no, I ask you, um, we are serving those people, those services are there for everyone in Watcom County. We are just trying to expand it, so that these people don't need to live in fear about taking their own little child. I mean, if you could imagine not being able to take your child to services, because you're undocumented.
I can imagine, and it's unfortunate, and I think it sucks, but at the end of the day, you broke the law, and that's how it comes down to it. I mean, it's a law for a reason. If you don't like the law, change the law. That's how it works, right? I mean, it, it's illegal because they broke the law.
No.
So, and did you-
Can I say, at this moment, we can't change the law, but tonight, we can change this, to allow them not to be in fear.
So, myself, then Ms. Brenner, then, did you have a question to answer? And then, yeah, myself, Ms. Brenner, Mr. Buchanan. So, Mr. Bird, I just encourage you to look at the words closely. It is not illegal immigrants, it's immigrants. And-
Then why can't we put the word legal back in?
Because then, okay, so then, if a legal citizen cannot prove their citizenship, because the moment you put the word legal in, you force the health department to verify their immigration status, and that would exclude undocumented workers, or undocumented people who've come here, and it would just, it would exclude US citizens who can't prove their citizenship. And if you don't believe me, that's what currently happens for US citizens who are eligible for US federal benefits, but can't prove their citizenship. So, uh, I was-
I was next.
No, you were next.
Yeah, I just want to say, I feel like my, my role here is as a health board member, not as a police person. And that's, I, I get what you're saying, but I don't feel like that's my job to police, it's my job to provide services, health, health services for people in need, all people in need, that are in our community. And I sincerely hope that by doing this, it doesn't encourage more people to come here illegally. I don't want that. I, I just know that we've got big health problems already existing, and I don't want them to get worse.
Mr. Sidhu, I think was next.
Oh, I was going to say that all the people that you label as illegal, they have social security numbers, they want them to work, pay for social security, but not get the benefits. How about that? $5 billion, these people add to the social security fund, and they will never withdraw, they will never draw it. Can we just use that money to do that? And 12 million people are veterans, it means that because of these people, we're not looking after veterans? We're not looking after veterans because we have no desire to look, look after them. Not that we don't have money. $700 billion a year, we spend on defense. And we can't take care of a couple of million veterans, because they don't want to take care of them. Not because there's no money, or because of these people. This is not stopping the, either we serve veterans, or we serve these people. There, it is not a binary choice. We have chosen, our government has chosen, not care about veterans. And nobody has voice enough to stand up and say, my government, take care of veterans. Nobody, everybody goes home and is fine and dandy. How come we have our veterans who, who are willing to die for our country, and they are homeless? How did we bear that for the last 25 years? Talk about illegal people all the time.
Brenner.
I really wish this whole conversation were not turned into, we just don't care about this, if we don't care about that, if we don't care about- I'm talking about health here, and it's really uncomfortable to have people, you know, make claim, oh, you must hate children, you must hate veterans, you must hate, that is so not called for. And, ugh, I don't like how this whole conversation is, to me, degenerated, rather, we're just talking about the health, and not just health, but that's what our focus is supposed to be, the health here of the community, not, we love these and we hate these, or anything like that. And I, I'm not comfortable with the way, the way this is being represented.
So I recognize you've been standing for a while. Madam Clerk, could you just remind us where we are in the process?
Motion to approve the resolution, and I believe the letter, also.
Let's do them separate.
I think you're going to do those separate.
Yeah, let's do them separate.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, correct? Yes, okay.
Correct.
Is there further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to one, with Mr. Bird opposed. The next item up is the letter itself. Do I have a motion to approve the letter?
Move approval.
Mr. Buchanan moves approval, Mr. Donovan moves approval. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to, to, uh, to adopt this version of the letter, and the difference between the two is the yellow language. And, um, I think you've got it, because it came from you guys. And I'll just read into the record, the difference between this and the letter in the packet, is after, there's a sentence that says, "Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Section 8 Housing, Healthcare Services, full stop." And then the additional words would be, the new language from that point on, in the second paragraph would read, "Many counties do not have the resources to pay for increased services at the local level. Counties should be placed in-"
Could be, boy.
Uh, could be placed in the position of having to deny service to those unable to obtain federal benefits, including US citizens, unable to provide proof of citizenship due to lost or stolen identification. Watcom County administers federal programs and changes to federal laws could impose burdensome, burdensome new tracking and reporting requirements, including identification requirements for local offices that administer these programs. So that's my motion, do I have a second?
I, well, I made the original motion, and I accept your friendly amendment.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So, motion, discussion on the motion for the letter. So we're now voting on the amended letter.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, you're, me?
If you wish.
Okay, yes, I do. Um, I kind of like what you wrote, I would just like to change a few words. I'm not sure counties could be placed in the position of having to deny service. It sounded to me, from what Regina said, that we aren't in the position of denying a lot of services. We, we'd have to provide them, we just wouldn't, it wouldn't be fun, you know, we, it, it would increase our costs and budget, rather than the way it is now. Am I right, Regina? I, I got that impression.
Actually, I think I can answer that. So what we discussed before is, we, the county already-
I would like to hear from Regina.
Regina, please come down. But while she's walking, I'll add, we are already in a position where we deny services. We will deny WIC services, for example, to a US citizen who can't prove their eligibility.
But is that, is, WIC isn't, it's a federal program.
Yes, WIC is a federal program.
So it's not, it's not us denying it.
Um, well, in Watcom County, I think we're in a, a better position, say, than many counties across the country. And so, we really do the best we can to provide services. But in some communities across the country of this past, they simply don't have any resources to provide services to people that really need them, so they would deny service.
Oh, okay.
Including US citizens who simply can't prove they're US citizens.
Yeah, yeah. So it may not be the case here in Watcom, because we do have a good system in place, but a lot of counties don't, and services could be denied to people that need them, simply.
Well, can I ask, I just want to ask you one other quote. A lot of times, we keep hearing that, um, for, for a lot of things, that, you know, all these mandates coming down from the feds, to the state, to the local, and we end up having to pay for it, because they don't give us the funding. But isn't that true with this, in a way, too? That's why-
Oh, yeah, of course it is, right.
If it changes, then-
Yes, if, if children are, or if families are afraid to enroll their children in federal services, which they're eligible for, then someone is going to have to provide those services, and it falls down to the county. Yeah, it falls down to the local level. So it, it, it would be a big impact on local communities.
Well, could we, could we add some language about, that would've been the, um, you don't have it in here, about putting an extra burden on the counties.
I think it is.
I didn't see it in the letter.
I don't have the letter in front of me, but I think-
I, I think it has that, you know, it could impose, it says it could impose burdensome new tracking and reporting requirements, including identification requirements.
What, we're, put it, what? Could, burdensome new tracking and reporting? I'm talking about services, in addition to tracking and reporting. It could put a burden on local jurisdictions to provide services that, if we can't get the funding from the feds or the state. This is, this is about, I'm talking about services, you're talking about tracking and reporting. I'm talking about the services themselves.
Yeah, and I think, I think the earlier, like, yellow language effectively, I think the earlier yellow language effectively says that, because it talks about the counties not having the resources to pay for increased services at, at the local level. And they would have to, they'd either have to increase what they spend with local dollars, or deny services if they're forced-
Why don't you put that in there?
Well, I think that's what it already says, is my point.
Very, whatever.
Further discussion. Seeing none, or in favor of this letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes six to zero, with Mr. Bird opposed. Next time, I have a special committee from the Ho- Hall, was, uh, an ordinance amending Watcom County Code 24.11, Drinking Water, from November 7th, 2018, AB 2018-303. This received a vote of four, two, and one abstention in the Committee of the Hall, and I reluctantly so move.
I second.
So, discussion.
Oh, yeah. Nah, okay, I'll, my, mine's quick, just pass it.
Okay, um, yeah, I thought in discussion, we had sort of recognized that, well, some of us recognized that to adopt this ordinance, we would have to amend the comp plan, because these are somehow commingled in terms of advice we've got. And we were kind of heading that way, it seemed like. But then when we approved this, I guess, is the idea, sorry, this, we, we approved this, and we are still going to docket a comp plan amendment? Well, what happens, does this then just sit there in limbo until the comp plan process goes through?
I think I could answer that.
Ms. Brenner, and then I think we probably need some assistance from Scott.
I want to answer it. We passed this, and it, I don't believe it even requires a comp plan amendment to pass it. The comp plan amendment we talked about was a comprehensive, uh, look at the whole, the whole issue, all these issues that are related. But there, this one is just about water associations, it has nothing to do with water districts, and it's a small amendment. So I'm not, I don't believe it necessarily needs to, no offense, but Ms. Frakes and I will agree to disagree, and I've talked to other attorneys who agree with me, so, there you have it.
Well, I don't know if other-
Start your name, please.
I'm sorry, Karen Frakes, and I'm sorry, I am at the tail end of a very bad cold, and I-
Yeah, you're contagious, you should be out of here.
Um, I, I'm not sure that, this is a pretty subtle issue, the issue of the comp plan amendment, and I would be surprised if any, um, I hope you haven't discussed my memo with other attorneys. And I doubt that anybody has thought of this issue, because- because it is sort of unusual how we adopt comp or code by reference into our comp plan. But to me, the process clearly requires a comp plan amendment.
Brenna, then myself.
No, you said this today, so it was out there in the public about needing a comp plan amendment.
Well, I didn't bring it up initially, somebody else brought it up initially.
I know, but it wasn't me bringing it up to somebody about your confidential stuff, nothing like that. But I did talk to one attorney, and the two others talked to me, and they don't agree with you, so...
Well, again, they probably don't understand the issue, and, you know...
I guarantee you one does, I can't guarantee the other two.
Well, I didn't explain it to them, and I...
That's okay.
To me, it's a no-brainer, it requires a comp plan amendment.
So I just want to give my prediction. First off, I will not be supporting this, but I will provide a prediction. If this passes tonight, it will be challenged, and it'll be challenged on the basis that we have not followed our own rules of procedure for making amendments to county laws and ordinances. We will end up paying hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money defending our decisions, as we did with the, I think it was 23 or 24 violations that were found under the Growth Management Act that were enacted by previous councils who decided to make arbitrary changes to the law without following the proper procedure. So we're going to, and that was, I don't know, 350,000, I think, by the time we went through the Supreme Court. What did the Hearst decision cost us in terms of legal fees? And all the Growth Management Hearings Board stuff, what was it? Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Actually, I'm sure it was, I believe it was between 165,000 and 200,000.
All the way through to the Supreme Court?
I believe so, it's been a few years.
Well, maybe it's only, maybe it's only $100,000. But I can guarantee you, we will be spending money, taxpayers' money, defending our decision. And I'm pretty confident we will lose, and I'm pretty confident that the judgment will include some sort of additional restrictions on the way the county can influence what happens in water associations. That's the reasons I'm voting against this. Actually, I will abstain, but Ms. Brenna.
Well, good for going on the record, telling people, "All you got to do is threaten a lawsuit, and we're going to back down because we don't want to spend money." I think if we believe we're correct, we should go forward and do it, and, you know, and bringing up that thing about the hearings board and all that stuff, that is like, for me, one of the worst examples you could bring up. We actually did win at the Court of Appeals, and it was reversed by elected people at the top who were very partisan. And, you know, this whole, and it could have gone the other way, it didn't. But to do this to people by saying, "Well, if you've got a lot of money, or even any money, and a lawyer will sue us, you're going to, you know, we should be so much more careful and not do these things." I think that's the wrong message to send to the public. I believe it's legal, and I support it.
And I believe it's not legal, which is why I think we...
Fine, but don't do this thing about lawsuit stuff and how much it costs. If we're right, we should do it, and, I mean, I just think that's a terrible, terrible thing to say to people.
Ms. Brenna, my issue is I don't believe we're right, and that's why I believe we would, we will be sued, and we will lose. That's my opinion, Mr. Sido.
What we discussed today was that we approve it, and then we go through the process of expedited process, docket it, and go through the amendment as soon as possible. Go through the Planning Commission, and come back to us, and we regularize it. You know, and that's a pathway, we thought that is possible, and PDS said that they can docket it and on expedited basis. And then we can make a similar request to the Planning Commission. And if they can expedite this, and then we can get done in 90 days. And if there is any lawsuit, that we will just prove it that we have everything done by the process. What is wrong with that?
Mr. Donovan, and I suspect Mr. Schroeder.
Yeah, Mr. Schroder might be able to answer my question. I mean, because I support that process in trying to push it to be as expedited as possible and finding maybe some, if the prosecutor's office would sign off on getting additional legal advice. But if we adopt this right now, it'll be effective, like, really soon. So what is, in the meantime, then, we haven't done the process and sought that other potential legal advice? What if somebody now say, "I can take this to a water association tomorrow," or whenever it goes into effect? And so that, I think it's kind of jumping the gun, even though this has been a frustratingly slow process.
Mr. Schroder.
Yeah, Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive. The only clarification I was going to provide, my understanding of the conversation in committee today was not to understand what the process would be since it is incorporated by reference into the comprehensive plan, that section in WCC 2411, which is unique and was done through some Growth Management Hearing's decisions and planning processes that we've done in the past. Which means it has to go to concurrent review, which was to expedite the process with it getting docketed and going through the Planning Commission process, and then concurrent review early next year in February or March to go through that process. But I don't believe you'd be able to pass the ordinance tonight and then go through that process. The conversations in committee today from Director Personias was to ask to get it docketed, go through that docketing process, go through the Planning Commission as quick as we can. I don't believe there'd be the ability to pass it tonight and then go through that process. I think the action of passing it tonight would be, I don't have a good term, but bucking the ability to go through that concurrent review. But I may want to get Karen's perspective on that, if she has some others.
Just before you do, Ms. Sido, I have a question for the county clerk. Has this been sufficiently noticed, and have we provided a public, open, public hearing on this? Because it is an ordinance.
Yes, we had a hearing on November 7th, I believe.
And you believe we've met the legal criteria?
Yes.
For the voting on an ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Sido.
The question I have is for Karen. Is it possible that we pass it with effective date April 1st, 2019?
No. It has to, before you pass this, the whole point of going through a process is to have a process where you listen to people, you have a lot of public participation. If you pass it before you go through the process, that subverts the whole purpose of the process.
Okay.
Brenna.
Well, we went through a whole public process for many months, so I feel like...
Not on this ordinance, you haven't.
Not on the exact wording, but on exactly what it does. Okay, we're just not going to agree, you and I.
No, I'm just saying, I didn't see a proposed ordinance until...
Okay, there was a proposal months ago, and then instead, we waited for the WIC to come up with something. And they didn't come up with anything. And I, it's not the fault of the WIC, I think it's the fault of us for not moving ahead.
Further discussion? Look like, oh, sorry, Ms. Frakes.
So if we don't pass, so... Sorry, if we don't pass it, is it just done?
For a long time, yeah.
Well, I think, no, I think the, if we don't pass it, that doesn't mean the issue is done. It means that there's an opportunity to...
Start the next, the real process.
To start the real process, which would be to docket it and run it through the Planning Commission and all the rest of it, so. Mr. Sido.
For clarification, I think what I'm proposing is, is not that we do not do anything on it, we can leave it, we can table it the way it is, and actually docket it. So that way, we are not letting it go away. Because I agree with Carol that if we vote and don't pass it, then the whole process starts again. And we can table it, but docket it through PDS, which we have the ability to do that, and then expedite it. And then we can say that this is the resolution sitting on it, and once we get back from Planning Commission, and we can pick up the same resolution and approve it. I don't want it to get it off the books. I would rather leave it alive somewhere in the process. And I don't think there is any objection to that legally, to leave it, table it for now.
Ms. Brenna?
Yeah, there's no problem.
Ms. Brenna, then myself.
Well, you're doing exactly what we did six months ago then, only a different, a different way of doing it. I mean, this is the kind of thing, if you really felt like that's what it needed, or somebody really felt that's what it needed, that should have been brought up six months ago, or maybe, it's maybe even been longer now. I don't think we need to do that, and I think we can pass it tonight. And I already made the motion, I'm not backing off.
So I just want to reiterate, I support the objectives of this. I'd actually like to see this rule enacted. But I support doing it the proper procedure, so in part, to make sure it is actually effective. The worst possible outcome for me is that we vote this today, in the form that it's in, a court strikes it down, and we've lost the opportunity to actually solve the problem. I'd rather go through the proper process and through the docketing, the Planning Commission, and the proper change to the comprehensive plan, and actually enact the intent of what we're trying to do here. Ms. Brenna.
Or we vote on this today, and if there's a lawsuit, we win. And then they've got what they want, we've got what we want, and actually, somebody should have done this a long time ago.
Mr. Sido.
The question comes if we don't win. I mean, you know, there are 50%, 50% chances.
Well, you know, you could get hit by a truck tomorrow, too.
You cannot guarantee. This has already gone to the court once, also. So I would be the first person to pass it tonight and get it done. But you do not want to do something that they, the public doesn't get benefit, and we don't get benefit, what good it is. It's just like, "Oh, I had my own way." That's not the point here. The point here, can we deliver the benefit to the beneficiaries? Can we deliver those benefits? That's what we are working for. Not that it's my ego, I had it and I passed it. Are we able to get those benefits to them or not, to all these people who could be affected by that? If we are not, and there is an injunction tomorrow, then it's like not even what's on the paper, it is written on. I don't want to be just bullheaded and do that, but I would like to do it so they get the benefit.
Brenna.
Again, you are assuming and inferring and being pretty blunt about what you think people's motives are. That is not your business. Your business should be whether you support it or you don't support it. And stop making inferences about other people's motives.
Further discussion, Mr. Buchanan.
Let me take a stab at this. I would like to amend the motion formally, and I would move to hold this ordinance and docket this for expedited comprehensive, comprehensive plan process.
So that's Mr. Buchanan's motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it, Mrs. Sido.
Let's discuss it.
Discussion.
It seems like this is kind of where we're headed. And I think, you know, the easiest way to do that is just to amend the motion to simply not take this, not to vote on this ordinance tonight, but to begin an expedited, docket it for expedited comp plan review process and get it going.
Yep.
Well, the original motion is voting on the ordinance. This motion would, I don't know, Madam Clerk, do you consider this a new motion? Because this was a vote on the ordinance. It's probably a superseding motion, isn't it?
Well, it would kind of be a friendly amendment.
I'm not friendly, no.
Not asking for a friendly, I'm asking for an outright amendment.
So you're asking to table the ordinance, basically?
A motion to table supersedes the main motion.
We could do it in two steps, I was trying to do it all in one step. But, yeah, that's why I was kind of struggling with the language. But, so I'll start to amend, I'll just move to hold.
To hold, the motion's been moved to table?
I seconded it already, so we're just having a discussion, and may I ask Karen another question? My question is, is that, besides the legal fight, you know, can effectively the benefit of passing it tonight can be delivered to the public or not? Or what could be the hindrance to that? Besides the GMA, I understand the fight with GMA, right? But I understand, what I want to know, if we pass it tonight, does the public get that benefit of passing it? Or somebody can bring out injunction tomorrow and put it in abeyance, and nobody gets anything?
I can't really predict what's going to happen. But if the law is determined to be invalid at some point, then nobody gets the benefit of it. I mean, I'm not talking about under the Growth Management Act.
Yeah, I'm not talking about Growth Management either, but somebody can go to the court and put a stay on it. Is it possible?
You know, I assume so. I, you know, I can't predict what somebody would do, but I believe the court would have the power to do that.
Yes, please.
Yeah, hypothetically, if...
Mr. Donovan.
If that happened, but we also had a second item that was docketed and going through planning, a stay on the first item would not affect the second item. They'd be separate, right?
Right.
So even if this passed tonight and failed, if we were moving forward with a more comprehensive reform on the code, we could continue to move forward with that comprehensive reform. But then if it passed and succeeded tonight, without a lawsuit, then we would just be two years ahead.
About the lawsuit that we won.
Yeah.
If you're asking me if I think that's good practice...
No, I'm asking you if...
I guess the conversation makes me uncomfortable.
My only question, Karen, was would it stop the second item? If we pass this tonight, but also docketed a more comprehensive reform, and this got a lawsuit and pulled into court, would it stop the comprehensive reform?
It depends on what happens in that first lawsuit. It could be more than, if it's found that not just the process is wrong, but the substance is not proper, then it could determine what happens in the second lawsuit.
But that's true, even if...
That's true regardless.
If you did it the other way, it's the same thing.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bird, I can't resist asking this question. What's your performance metrics that you're offering on the return on investment of proposing an ordinance?
Sure.
That we then have to defend with a lawsuit? And risk losing, as opposed to simply following the proper process and winning it through the fact that we have followed state law?
I think if I got this right, what I was told earlier was it cost about $150,000 to defend it for the Hearst, when that went through and got questioned, which is about the same that you spent on an attorney upfront for the moratorium on Cherry Point. So I figure it's a wash, to be honest.
Not necessarily connected.
That's not a whole... I mean, $150,000 before or after, the only difference is two years.
Good thought.
First off, as clarification, it cost, the number was it cost us approximately $200,000 for Hearst, and we spent 65 on the Cherry Point.
We're not done.
No, no, we're not done, but anyway, Ms. Brenna.
Well, I'd like to put this in perspective. We're also talking about what it costs people to fight this on their own, what it costs them to give in to extortion and blackmail. I think it's a wash that way, too.
So, just to remind you, we got, the first motion on the floor was a motion to hold, and that's the one we have to limit our discussion to. So, is a further discussion on the motion to hold.
Wait, wait, wait. No, I'm opposed to that, and I'm opposed to that because we've had the same thing happen now for months and months and months. When it came before us in June, we talked about it, and we said we were going to hold, and we'd give the WOOC an opportunity, because it's all the water associations together, they could get together, they could come up with a resolution. It was their idea. They said, we can do it, give us till the end of September. We gave them to the end of September. That came, they said we need another two weeks at that point in time to get something together. We gave them another two weeks to do that. After that, we came in here, we had a private meeting, we gave them, oh, hey, we need two more weeks. That was six weeks ago. Four weeks ago, we had this conversation, you gave them two more weeks, and somehow we missed the last meeting, and now we're four weeks later, and now we're going to hold it again. I mean, it's just this repetitive cycle of saying, hey, we're going to hold this, and we'll do something at some point, and then six months go by, and now another year's going to go by, and we're not going to do anything. How many community members are going to continue to come up here and express the exact same problem with no resolution, because...
And he haven't even come up here, because they think we're so, we don't do anything anyway.
And we can't, like, to act out of fear of the unknown, of what may potentially happen, we can move forward with this. If a lawsuit came in, we could stop it at that point. We would assume that we're going to get sued, and that we can't do anything, because there's the possibility. We could get sued by allowing any one of these people to come in here and sit on a chair. They walk through that threshold, they could trip on that stair, and they could sue us for a million dollars, but we still let them come in here and sit down and listen to us, right? So, I mean, at what point is that line in the sand in which we're willing to take the risk versus the reward for our community, or the benefit to our community? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, Mrs. Soodoo, just before you do, just for clarity here, Mr. Buchanan and Mrs. Soodoo put a motion to hold, and I think Mr. Buchanan's intention was to make a second motion after that, right?
To initiate a comp plan review.
Right, so, Mr. Soodoo.
Yeah, I think that the only thing different than, and I'm totally frustrated that last six months was total waste of time, and we could have had this thing solved much earlier, even before the fall started, you know? It was easy thing that we could have done that, and we went down this, chasing the rabbit hole of WOOC and all this. Anyways, that's water under the bridge, we can't bring it back. But what I said earlier, the clarity, I think that we went on something which was not clear. What Mr. Buchanan has said now, and we did talk in the committee also, that we have a Step One, Two, Three Plan, that we put it on a docket, we expedite, and I think the administration is listening, and they agree with that, it's on the record now, that we expedite, and we go to Planning Commission, they go through their process, and we'll request them to expedite. It comes back. Now, the whole process is in the hands of the county council. It's not with WOOC, it's not with Health Department, it's not with state or anybody. It's a process we can see through, that you do A, B, and C, and we have a resolution. That's the difference, what we went through last six months and where we are today. That's what I wanted to point out.
Ms. Fraser.
Just to clarify that, I just wanted to know what the process would be if we tabled?
Yeah, the process would be that, of course, not, we can't do it today, but January 15 meeting, we will get a resolution from PDS, Planning and Development Services, on this thing, to docket it, means it's on the county council agenda. There's a process called docket, and maybe you already know or not, you know, but there is a process how we can do that. County Council has the ability to bring any item on the docket. If the private person has to do it, they have to make an application, they have to give $3,000, and then they have to wait, and all this, just for your benefit, and it may take several months to even get on our agenda, but we can put anything on our agenda like right now. So the idea is that when we docket it, then we can refer this, the processes, the issue should go to Planning Commission, and they will look at the same, what we are looking at today, and Planning Commission goes through that process, and then they make their yea and nay, and they send back to the council. We make the final decision. We can even change, even if the Planning Commission does not recommend, we can still pass it. Okay? I just want the clarity of that. So what I'm seeing is it's clearly in the purview of the county council to see it through, which was not there before. And, did I say it right?
Yeah, Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive, yeah, that process is the same process that Director Personias and I talked about after this afternoon's committee meeting, in anticipation for council maybe taking this action. And so, yeah, the administration will work with the Planning Commission to get it as soon as we can, and the January 15 resolution to get it docketed, and then I think what would happen is the concurrent review, which is a process that we're going to go through for 2018, we may want to slow that down just one bit, so that we can get back to the council with this item in that concurrent review.
And that will be the larger piece.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think I'm clear in my mind.
So just for the benefit of those who are not, don't deal with this every day, when I first joined the council, trying to understand the different paths of the way you have to do different legal aspects, probably came the closest I've ever had to making my head want to explode, because there are, depending on what the nature of the thing is, there are very specific things under state laws to the path that you have to do, and the docketing process is one that is for stuff that affects, ultimately affects the comprehensive plan. So, I've lost a little bit of track as to who else had their hand up. Did you have, did your question answered? Right, Mr. Bird.
Yeah, I just want to remind the council, we did have a process that we were confident in, just like this process in June, and that was sending it to the WOOC, another group that was going to get together and review the code, and review the documents, and come back with suggestions, and then we would vote on their suggestions. The only difference here is, we were told that the WOOC was going to work last time, now we're told that planning's going to work this time, so this time we're going to send it to planning, they're going to do it, and they're going to send it back, and we're going to review it. So, as far as I'm aware or concerned, those are pretty much the exact same processes, they're the exact same steps, the only difference is the body and channel that we're sending it down based on what we've been told this time was supposed to work, one, and two, I'm just curious, how many things are on that docket that have been sitting there for years and years and years and never actually been done? Because I know we talked about it, and there was quite a few, so we're going to put it on a blind list, but it'll be on the list. It'll be on the list, it'll just never be done, so...
What are you doing, Mr. Soodoo? Mr. Bird?
No, no, that's fine.
For clarity, we put it on the docket, which is, we add it to the list, and then we set the priority on the list. Mr. Soodoo.
All I was going to add is that we are not doing this to planning, and then the planning can say, oh, we do not want to do that. We are not in that position. What happened with WOOC was that we were told that WOOC can make a decision and give us a definition, and then we will incorporate that definition into the CWSP, the Coordinated Water System Plan, or into the Department of Health Water Supply Code. That was the difference, that we were dependent on that. Now, the process is when we send it to Planning and Development, we're not waiting for Planning and Development to say no, or they don't. All we are asking, we are making a request, please make a resolution and docket it. Now, once it isn't on the list, it's up to the council, what list they want to work on. If we all going to fizzle out and come in January, we say, oh, well, we're not interested in it anymore, we should talk about it now, it's up to us. If it is on docket, we can change that priority. We, there's seven people sitting here, and there will be seven people here for another year. If these seven people think that we come back in January and we do not want to talk about this issue, yes, then I agree. If we want to take that priority, we have the ability to do that. It's not in somebody else's hands that's on the list. We have the ability to work on whatever is on the list. It's not in somebody else's hands.
Further discussion on the motion to hold? Further discussion on the motion to hold? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. No.
So I have five ayes, is that correct? And two noes. So that passes five to two with Bird and Brenner opposed. Mr. Buchanan, you got another motion?
Yes, I would move that we request the administration to come back with a resolution to docket this item in an expedited manner.
Do I have a motion from Mr. Buchanan? Do I have a second?
I second that.
Mrs. Soodoo, seconds.
Yeah, and I would like to put a date on it, January 15. They docket it on January 15.
I accept that.
The motion is to request that county staff come back to, with a draft, to docket it on January 15th. Further discussion? Seeing, yes, Mr. Bird.
I'd like to have them add in the timely, reasonable, and transparency items to that list, and so when they're reviewing this for a docket, I don't see why we're going to go back to it.
Well, I think you'll have to be a bit more specific.
Well, that's what this has all come down, or stemmed from, right? Is that in the code, it says that it should be timely and reasonable, and that there is no definition to what timely is, or what reasonable is, as far as costs go. And so us putting something forward, that's what we're essentially asking them to solve, is to bring back some alterations of the code that address what timely is and what reasonable is, and I think that we need a level of transparency that we require from these associations.
May I jump in?
Sure.
So, if I may suggest, I think what Mr. Buchanan is suggesting, correct me if I'm wrong...
Is doing this...
Is to docket the exhibit.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Which doesn't include things like timeliness, it's just whether we could incorporate this language. So, the end result, the timeliness and reasonableness is in the ordinance, the language that would impact the water associations is in the exhibit. So, Mr. Soodoo.
Let me clarify for the benefit of Mr. Bird, there are two things here. The one thing is that we make a one-line change in the Watcom Health Department Water Code. That's one thing. And that does not have the burden of reasonableness or anything. We're just saying that what we said, 500 feet and X dollars or whatever, that's what we are talking. That's totally different. What you're talking is, that's a parallel issue, that we need to look at all the associations and define the reasonableness, and define the timely, and come up with a checklist of five, 10 items that all the water associations should conform to. That is a separate issue. So you can't mix the two. So what we are docketing is this particular issue of that if they are 500 feet and they have a well or whatever that we talked about, I don't have in front of me.
What's in the ordinance?
You know, whatever that resolution, that's all we are talking about. That is one small sliver of the whole issue. What you're talking about is the total conformance of all the water associations as per Watcom County Health Department direction, that you must have within the next three years, five years, please conform all your plans to these values. That's a separate thing. And that's what we want to do a concurrence process for.
Mr. Bird, and then Ms. Brenner.
What I'm talking about is the root cause that that's trying to fix. That fixes it for like 2% of our population, maybe 10%, and then there's going to be 30% that don't get that fixed, that still are in this black zone of, hey, we have been sitting here for two years waiting for a water share or denial letter and still don't have it, but is that considered timely still? Because there's no definition to timely. If you're suggesting that we run them in parallel, and we have this ordinance as one, and then we also docket something that addresses the definitions of timely and reasonable, and what transparency requirements these government organizations are going to be held to, then I'm okay with that, too. I don't mind separating them and running them in tandem, but I want the bigger issue dealt with.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, I think they do need to be separated. I support both, but I'm not sure you can do them in tandem, because I don't think this issue's going to take very long to get through. The other one will.
The other one will, yeah.
Oh, I don't mind starting them at the same time, the 15th, absolutely, but if he does, and I'm not speaking for Councilmember Buchanan, if he doesn't want to do them both together, you can make the motion after we vote on this.
Mr. Bird, I think, I understand your concern, and I would share it, save that I think in Exhibit A, it actually deals with that, because it defines the time limits, there's 30 days for this, and et cetera, et cetera. So, the timeliness and reasonableness issue comes up in the finding of facts, and it's used to justify why you would adopt Exhibit A. If you adopt Exhibit A, you have addressed the timeliness issue.
So you're suggesting we're going to do them both at the same time?
No, I'm saying Exhibit A does that for you. It answers the question without having to ask the question. Anyway, Ms. Brenner.
Maybe, maybe not. I just think, let's do them both separate, period, and just see what comes out with the more comprehensive. I think what you're asking for is more than what's in this thing. So we can agree to disagree about whether it's the same or not, but I want this to be the ordinance, and that's what you meant when you made your motion, right? And then we'll make, you make a motion, or I will, on the other thing.
So for clarity, Mr. Buchanan, you're making Exhibit A as your motion for the docket, correct?
Pardon me?
Your motion is to make Exhibit A the language...
Docketed item.
The docketed item, yes. So, in an Exhibit A, it says, must reply within 30 days, which I think is timely and reasonable.
Let's do it, let's vote.
Timely, that's timely, but that's, reasonable is cost, right? So 500 feet is $100,000 to put in, is that reasonable? So it might address timely, but it doesn't necessarily address reasonable, and it doesn't address transparency. Where am I on the list? Where is the documentation? What's the process that you go through?
Okay.
So, separate's fine, I'm okay with separate.
Separate, yes.
And, Mr. Bird, if you're trying to address things like, the way I think you've just described it, then you're likely to find support from me for doing so as well, so...
We'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. I haven't seen the language you want to propose yet. All right, any, Mr. Donald?
A clarification, what's the separate thing? The motion is just, it's Exhibit A?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion on the floor is to send...
I'm worried about none of that.
Right, okay. Further discussion on sending Exhibit A forward to be docketed in January 15?
January 15.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0, okay. Okay.
Question, though, can we docket the other item without...
Isn't that the guy from Deer Creek?
No. Can we docket, or do we need an actual ordinance to docket, or can we just ask that it be docketed?
We can...
I would...
So he's saying yes.
No, no.
We don't need an ordinance.
What I'm saying is we can come up with the resolution wording.
He's not here.
But you do need some written language.
Yes, you need a written language, not just verbally.
Okay, next item up is a resolution approving the Glacier Water District Water Comprehensive System Plan.
Oh, did we? Okay. That's what's on my schedule.
You want to make your motion at the end.
For the other docket.
All right. Council appointments to boards and commissions, appointment to fill vacancy at the Watcom County Drayton Harbor Shellfish Protection District Advisory Committee, three vacancies, four-year terms, members must be, have a direct interest in the Shellfish Protection District duties are to advise... District duties are to advise the county council on the proposed actions and operations relating to the restoration of water quality in the Drayton Harbor Shellfish Protection District applicant is Heather Christensen. Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Good point.
All right.
Ms. Brenner, move, I take yours as a second.
Sure.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item up is executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, request of confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Tara Satshu Shek. Hope I got that right.
Stushak.
Satshu Shek?
Stushak.
Oh, whatever he said. To the Bicycle Production Pedestrian Advisory Committee, AB 2018-378, do I have a motion to approve?
I move second.
I think that was Mr. Bird and Ms. Brenner. Mr. Bird was the, made the motion, Ms. Brenner seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item up is request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Kara Mitchell to the North Sound Behavioral Health Organization's Advisory Board, AB 2018-379, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
This is Frazee moves to approve, I'll take Ms. Brenner's as a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item up is introduction items.
I'll move the introduction items, but I got a question, because I'm not sure, I was, I just started looking at that one, maybe Mr. Schroeder could help us with it, I don't know. That ordinance that amends the Watcom County Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force purposes, purpose function, membership, and organization to repeal, Watcom County Code 2.19, Law and Justice Council, and to designate the task force to serve as the Law and Justice Council, and I love the idea unless it ends up that we have to have it mo-- heavily weighted, like the Law and Justice Council has been, and--
So I need these, I need a second to introduce before we can discuss.
Well, no, I don't know if I wanna support introducing it, if that, I, I have no idea if that, I just wanna know if that's what we're talking about.
Do I have a motion to introduce the, all four items?
I, I said maybe I was gonna answer Ms. Brenner's question.
Oh, you're one of the introducers, so, yeah, maybe you could answer.
I know the answer. Do we need a second on that?
Yeah, we need a second to discuss. Yeah, do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Fine, I have a motion, motion to introduce is Mr. Donovan, Mr. Buchanan, right, fine.
Yeah, I look forward to talking about this, this is coming from the task force itself. I think the way we've tried to have the ordinance set up is there's the exact same people on the commission, there are still citizen appointees, there's a, currently a Law and Justice, what do we call it, council that had 50 members, hasn't been for years, with input from, this is Jill Bernstein, the sheriff, and various folks, trying to, I don't say--
She resigned.
She did, but she was one of the ones sort of, you know, pushing this, but it's, the goal is to make the task force stay the task force with the same mission, while also satisfying the RCW that says we're supposed to have a Law and Justice Council that shall do essentially the things that this is doing and not change the mission of the task force, but we can talk about that in your committee.
Well, yeah, but it does, doesn't the Law and Justice Council require a certain makeup that would kinda--
Yeah, we got charts and--
We don't have to do that kind of makeup?
Yeah, we do, no, we, we spent a lot of time--
Baked into this.
What?
That's baked into this.
When we go over the ordinance, we can go through the charts of who's required by the RCWs for Law and Justice Council, who's on the task force, how all the same--
I see it in here, but I, I, it's kinda hard to understand it, if we end up having to have it weighted heavily one way or the other.
Would beg to differ with that characterization, but we can, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Further discussion about introducing these items. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Special committee of the whole reports, I was not there, Mr. Donovan took over. I understand you had a very contentious item.
Uh, I think we met for two minutes and appointed Councilmember Cal Frazee to fill the vacant committee assignments on natural resources, public works, and health, or at least until our next meeting. And we adjourned.
You're already done.
Thanks.
It's amazing.
You'll get used to my sense of humor, hopefully, Mr. Donovan's natural resources.
He calls it humor.
He's used to it.
Sometime about, about 11 hours ago, the Natural Resources Committee, that, uh, we had a overview of the 2005, the 1691 plan where we're trying to respond to the state in, coming up with a Washington management plan, and we are on a very compressed schedule. We did, I, I think staff was seeking direction, we, we gave direction on whether we expected metering, there was a majority support for that, there was a discussion of what the fee might be, I think there was a majority direction that that would stay at the $500, since in the statute already, of which 350 goes to the state. We had, kinda ran out of time in terms of giving guidance on the draw per day, gallons per day, and the planning unit is meeting tomorrow, so we're in a very compressed schedule, but that took up most of our time, and we spent a really, just a couple seconds talking about the Shellfish Protection Districts, some housekeeping ordinance where we are going to have the, the Birch Bay ones merging into BB Warm, and the length of time that the other districts will be around will be 2022, might have been, but, so those will stay around, they still have good work to do, and that was natural resources.
Finance and administrative services, Mr. Bird.
The items we went over today and approved, there was nothing additional.
Public Works, Ms. Brenner.
Um, we had a, an incredible presentation in Public Works from John Hutchings, the director of Public Works, regarding a bridge project, the count, I mean, we got glowing adulation from the state and feds on this, and money, too, we got money on it, too. So, I was impressed, I, the sta-- some of the staff were here, and a big kudo to Jim Karcher, who was part of this whole thing, and, and was really good at getting it all together, too. So, we have an exceptional public works department, and we were, I think it was, I can't remember if it was a state or federal official or both, saying that the bridge, it was this bridge project, was, I mean, that we were at the top of all the applications that went in, you know, we, ours was just outstanding. You don't hear it that mu-- we don't get enough kudos from the state and feds, so I thought it was pretty impressive.
I concur, in fact, I think the one part that struck me was, they were a year ahead of schedule.
What?
They were a year ahead of schedule.
I, well, that's true, yeah, and they were nice.
No, 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 our, our team brought in the project a year ahead of schedule, that's--
Oh, the project, I thought you meant that they were here ahead of schedule.
I think that's pretty impressive.
Right, and it was done more than on time.
Committee of the whole, we had a discussion regarding property acquisition in Birch Bay Boem, and then the special committee of the whole, we had a discussion today, on the ongoing discussion regarding Cherry Point, in this case, the specific focus was on the industry responses posed to the council in September. And then we had a discussion about the drinking ordinance, which we have now just voted to hold. So, other items. Council member updates, Mr. Buchanan?
Nothing, other than, everybody have a great time off with your families over the holidays, and look forward to working next year.
Ms. Frazee.
Yeah, I just wanna say I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I enjoyed today.
Whoa.
Strange person.
I am. Get ready.
I was just gonna say welcome Councilmember Frazee, and if you enjoyed today, it's gonna be easy.
Oh, really?
Everybody have a good winter break.
That's his piece of cake.
I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner.
I wish you all lots of super dark chocolate.
Yeah.
Mr. Bird.
Merry Christmas, everyone, merry time off.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Mrs. Sudhu.
Yeah, I did already.
Oh, no, no. Any, any other updates or anything else?
No, nothing else.
So I would just add two other things, first off, I'm really pleased to see Ms. Frazee here. You, you seem to fit well in, you know, very well in your first day, and congratulations. The only thing is, you've got better posture than the rest of us combined.
I think Mr. Bird looked like this his first few days, too. We'll see.
Are you giving free lessons in that, or?
The question, the question I have is in 12 months' time, whether you're still gonna be sitting up straight or slashing like the rest of us. With the rest, with that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and thank you very much to staff for another wonderful year. Excellent, thank you. And we are adjourned.